Ladies and gentlemen, this time we're going to observe a moment of silence. Observing a moment of silence, and I hope that in your thoughts you will think about one of our police officers that passed away and remember Scott Sorensen in your thoughts this morning.
Shivi, Breckus, Zadra, Delgado, absent Dorch, Jarden, Kachal.
Here. This will go to public comment. Cynthia Morgan, you wish to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I think in the downtown quarter of the community, there's a lot of empty property. There were organizing things that would like to take specifically the property that has been turning into part of our and take it into the community garden rather than there constantly being people going to stairwell to break building down by doctoring visitors and smoking crack, prostitutes servicing people. Of course, people smoking weed. Now, when you walk around the doctoring, you go, look at that, that's real hard. You call the police or you yell at them. Well, if there was activity there, you wouldn't have this going on. You would actually have this element staying away. And how do we know about what is happening?
Would have to look into it, and we will. Uh huh. Some of it's property, private property, so some things we can't, but we can have staff look into it and see what it is. Okay, thank you very much. Ted LeBetter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ted LeBetter for the record. I want to bring back some issues that we discussed last week. I'll start off by talking about how this body takes public comment on agenda items. It's actually been 11 months since I first addressed this issue about the public comment, and hopefully we can start to come to some kind of resolution. Last week, I asked the city attorney's office to explain the difference between discussion and deliberation as it plays an important role during the public comment. Their answer was that discussion wasn't part of deliberation, and that is all just a process. Unfortunately, that does not actually answer my question, so today I will try and answer that question for you. Discussion, when you're talking about an agenda item, is the process of collecting and acquiring the facts that are pertinent to the topic. Deliberation is the process of coming to a conclusion based on those facts. So discussion would sound like, what does the open meeting law say about public comment on agenda items? Deliberation would sound like, I can support public comment on agenda items after staff report and after discussion because it leads to a more effective public participation. The attorney, or the city attorney was right about one thing. Public comment on agenda items is a process. And just like any process, when you can go through, refine and refine your process, what you end up with is a better end result. So if we could go through, refine, affect this public body's process for how they take comment on agenda items, we're going to end up with better results, and those are better decisions made by you folks as well as more meaningful and effective public participation. Now, Mr. Mayor, I know this is a decision that you get to make on your own, but since this is about process, I think an agenda item is the most appropriate way to discuss this topic. Mr. Mayor, I ask that you place this topic on the agenda for a future discussion. Would you be willing to do that?
I'm not sure at this time. I will look at it. I know that under all the procedures, when we don't have a staff report, I intend to have staff reports before we have any public comment. I do believe it's better we get the public comment before we go into deliberations up here because that way we have the information.
Yes, sir, and I agree. Public comment should come before deliberation, but should come after discussion. And let me explain again why this is important. Mr. Mayor, you have forgotten, on a number of occasions recently to take public comment on agenda items, it happened last week during the waste management, and it happened in meetings in July to Mr. Morton on a couple cash disbursement items. So by improving the process, we can actually prevent that.
I think we've got a good process now, sir, and if you don't like it, then you can file a report or complain or whatever you want, or if this council wants to do it. But we've been able to, I, there's certain regulations, you don't, you know, I have to give you three minutes at the beginning and minute three at the end, and then on the items in between with Mason's rules and Roberts' rules and open meeting laws. I will pull public comment after we have staff reports. If we don't have a staff report, if we have a staff report, then it'll be after we go through it.
And let me give you another great example of why discussion is so important prior to public comment.
I'm gonna give him another minute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the August 14th meeting regarding the train change that, unfortunately, I couldn't be here, but Councilwoman Breckis, after I watched the video, asked a number of really important questions. As a member of the public, had I not had an opportunity to hear those questions prior to public comment, there would have been a lot of information that I wouldn't have. You guys, as leaders of this community, are dealing with some very complicated issues, and members of the public that would like to participate, we don't have as much information, we don't have the resources that you do. So when you're discussing these topics prior to public comment and you're asking these difficult questions, you're not only helping to inform members of the public, but you're helping to tailor our public comment to the issues that are important to your decision. Mr. Mayor, I realize you said you don't want to have an agenda item on this.
No, I haven't said that. I said, I'll look at it. Did I say I didn't have one on? So don't put, don't put words in my mouth.
I've been talking to you about this for one year.
No, you have not.
So one year.
No, you have not.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Goodbye. Eddie Lorton?
For the record, my name's Eddie Lorton, Mr. Mayor, City Council. And I want to clarify something on, by the order of the other side, that I ended up by discovering the misappropriation of funds, and I want to make sure there was an oversight, an accidental misappropriation of funds, and not something that anyone's done on purpose or anything like that. I think it was just an oversight. We know we can get into it later, but I want to make sure that's clarified, so.
I hope you'll clarify it on Lincoln.
I will.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have another comment? That's it? Okay.
Unless one is off.
No, thank you very much. Reggie Mizango? Reggie, I apologize for mispronouncing your name and stuff.
That's okay.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Reggie Mizango, and I'm the president of the National Federation of Blind. And first of all, we'd like to applaud the city for their efforts and the enthusiasm that I've received so far as I've reached out to you guys with our issues. Councilmember Breckis has been very enthusiastic and very generous with the time and very assistive man. And I've also gotten very good response from Herb Dietrich at the public works office and his position, Craig Dean, so I'd like to thank all of them for their efforts. We formed a white cane committee, which I'm the chair, to investigate the extent at which accessibility for blind people in our area is available, and we've been pleased to find out as we learn day by day that the city is already in the process and has the same vision in mind, too. For example, the intersection of Manhattan Sutro and the Washington County Senior Center is being converted for accessibility, I think as we speak, and it should be done anytime that it's not now. So we thank you for that, and if you have anything to do with it. And we'd like to just offer you our assistance in any way that we can to help further the process. We are, as I say, we're investigating to what extent the accessibility is already in place, and we'd like to test these locations and evaluate them, and we'd like to send you a report on the effectiveness that they offer to blind in our area. We have people varying degrees of blindness from just low vision all the way to total blindness, and we want to see how each, each location affects the individual type of blind person. So we're here to offer our assistance in any way in testing the locations that are in place now and any further locations that are proposed or implemented. We're offering our assistance to test, to diagnose, and make a report on the effectiveness of the center.
We appreciate your service and helping us, and keep us posted so we can stay up to date and correct the problem.
Mr. Mayor, we invite you, you may have already worked with April in our Parks and Rec Department, we have an access advisory committee that specifically is responsible and on top of these issues. And if you haven't yet had discussion with them, I really encourage you to do that. And we actually have a committee of citizens who are impaired in various ways, and maybe that's something that you would like to keep an eye on when we have an opening and have one of your members apply to, to serve at that board as well. It only meets once a month.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I recently discovered the access advisory committee, and I spoke with one of their members, April Wolf.
Right. Good.
Yes, I'm very interested in that, and we're going to try and partner with them in any way that we can. Their next meeting is September 24th, and we're planning to attend that.
Terrific. I will see you there.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to it. If I may have just another moment.
I'll give you another moment.
Thank you, sir. We are also developing a survey questionnaire that would like to campus our entire jurisdiction in northern Nevada, and we intend to create a database that will help us define, define areas that are hotspot or something where accessibility may be needed, and our blind assistance is, you know, very, I don't even know what the word is, excuse me. So with this questionnaire, we'd like to share this information with you, too, and try to create a comprehensive database for the whole area that we can use as a finding hotspot.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
One additional thing, we are organizing the observance of white cane day, which is October the 15th, and we'd like to invite you to come to our white cane log. We're organizing a march to the arch. We are going to march from the federal building up on North Virginia Street down to the arch to the plaza, and we invite you to join us in our march. And if you would like to speak here from there, if you'd like to schedule a few moments, if you'd like to say a few words, and by all the council members to join us, and if you have any ideas or suggestions, I'd give you a release there without my name.
Okay. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Mark McKell?
Yeah, hello, my name is Mr. Turbin. Hi. My name is Mark McKell. I'm a cashier at your residence, and I'm here today to, uh, here to be meeting, too, Okay, people help me clean. I, I don't want anyone, I'm not there, I, 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 I don't want this to. Anyways, my life's completely changed as a result of the crash. It has left me unable to drive. I, I did the best I can to be independent, but due to my age, it is very difficult. All this was because I got the cars in Trump driver. I feel I survived in order to be an example to others. Parents, don't drive Trump with their kids in the car.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mark, it's a good message, and we appreciate you sharing that with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Go to item A5 on the agenda, Mr. Manager.
Test one, two.
Nothing, nothing, Mr. Manager? Approval of the agenda?
Public comment.
Oh, yes. Mr. Dine? Oh, yes, Mr. Dine, before I go further, yes, you're up.
The young lady is going to bring even mic recording transition, it's not working.
What?
It's not going out in the television, that's important.
Oh.
Thank you very much for, thank you very much.
That would have been a blessing for the city, but other than that, you know.
Maybe the rest of the citizens should be able to have their public comment again, too, you know? I mean, only under fairness, but I won't.
No, I understand, Mr. Dine.
She told me not to use my parade ground voice. Sam Diney, the Encyclopedia of Reno Government, Sam is an Air Force Academy graduate, and Sam is, I'm Sam, I've attended every city council meeting, virtually every city council meeting since 1994, and I got to say one thing, I like Mr. Dorch's new look, and I don't know if he was dying his hair black before, or if he's just putting a tint of gray in there now. At any rate, and I don't know what he's doing for, at any rate, at any rate, maybe my color vision is going out. Who knows? At any rate, I, I've attended all of these meetings, and way back in the day, back when Mr. Griffin was sitting in that seat, right in the middle of that thing, if Mr. Griffin wasn't around, I would sort of, in the beginning, I would wonder, where's Mr. Griffin? And then I, then I said, what's the difference? He's just, Mr. Griffin is just another vote up there. It doesn't matter if Mr. Delgado's gone or Ms. Jarden's gone, it's just one more vote. That man right there, Mr. Kachal, has no more power, no more strength than he's even nodding his head right there for the record. Please take that on the camera, oh, the, now the TV guy's over there sleeping. At any rate, put it on the record that Mr. Mayor agrees that that position has no more power than the rest. And what it leads me into, of course, is the fact that we've got all of these career politicians out there, most of whom were put into position by the vote-stealing traitors. But anyway, now these career politicians are wanting to play musical chairs and suddenly say, well, I'm not a city council member, not realizing that that position right there, Mr. Kachal's position, is no more powerful than the rest. They're all the same one, and I know that, I know that the Attorney General there, for some bizarre reason, is saying otherwise, but that's only an opinion, there's no law involved. We need somebody who's, whether they're running for mayor or not, somebody who will try to find an honest court somewhere. Well, hello, Mr. Hooper, somebody who's, find an honest court somewhere, and I am going to put in $100 towards that lawsuit because I think it's important enough that we, for us, to get rid of these career politicians who are permeating our, they're permeating the community and driving it bankrupt. If they were doing a good job, that would be another thing, but they're driving the community bankrupt, and those career politicians, they were termed out, and that's the reason. If they want a job, tell them to go to Fernley or Las Vegas and try to get a job. You know, a lot of folks ask me, Sam, do you ever have any accomplishments when you come, after you've been coming here for 20 years? And I said, yes, I have, and I won't even go into the list. I saved, I was instrumental in saving the air guard mission, they wanted to get fighting, fighter planes, and I talked them into getting cargo planes, which they need. But now, today, I remind all of you that Sam was the person who, single-handedly, back in 2004, single-handedly, when the county commission was trying to obliterate, obliterate Burning Man for various reasons, Sam was the only person to go to the podium and say, don't do it, I gave all of the reasons, and guess what? They didn't do it. Burning Man, Burning Man, thank you for the extra moments like everybody else got. Burning Man got nothing but nasty headlines in the media every day, nasty headlines all of the time. Now Sam saved Burning Man, and guess what? It's the darling of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam, for saving Burning Man.
Mr. Dine, Mr. Dine, I've been here for almost 12 years, I'll hold the $100.
You always make.
I've seen that, I've seen that $100, I've seen that $100 on about 12 occasions.
I know, it's all crumbled up and framed.
I know what it looks like, you showed it to me.
You don't need to hold it because, guess what, Mr. Mayor? I, I bet I have offered 75, maybe 100 bets with this same $100 bill.
That's right.
And there's no need for you to hold it because nobody ever takes me up on my bets because they know I am right.
Thank you very much.
I am the Encyclopedia of Reno Government.
Thank you. Well, I tried to get it, cats. All right. Now, we'll go to approval of the agenda. Any changes anybody wants to make or anything? Chair, entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. This time, we'll go to item B1, cash dispersments. We have a person which to speak, Mr. Eddie Lorton.
City Council, for the record, my name's Eddie Lorton, Mr. Mayor. Why ended up on the part about cash dispersments? Part of our problem, why some of these things were overlooked in the budget, was our budget's not itemized. No other city would accept this kind of budget. It's so easy to shift money around as to where ours isn't wine item, like Hillary at the last meeting didn't know about supporting the homeless shelter or not, and it was cut out, and like the fire hydrant thing, I mean, there's so many things that are left out of this budget that I wish we had itemized and reviewed, that we'd know what we're paying. And another thing that these other cities do also, a lot of these managers do, is the fact that they end up, they do their warrants and their cash dispersments, and they'll take their pile of checks, see what they're paying out, because I am being constructive about, even though that website thing, I'm, I'm telling you, I'm being constructive about this thing, and trying to point out some things that can maybe help out. That's what I'm trying to do. So on the cash dispersments, if they could take their checks, usually they approve all the payouts together, they look at what they're paying, and then things can't slip through the, you know, cracks like that have happened lately, and there's a lot more of them. So the two I found were like 300,000, and there's a lot more, so the number's bigger, and accidental or not, the thing is, it slipped through the system. So a lot of these cities do the cash dispersments together and see what's being paid out through the checks, that they're approving or not, and not just at the end, like an accountant does, pay out the checks, and then all of a sudden they get a report on it. So if they can review some of the procedures, then maybe some of these things won't slip through, because I know everybody here wants that sort of thing.
Thank you very much. Close the public comment on staff, on cash dispersments, NDE, disqualifications or anything, or any conflicts? Okay, Chair, entertain a motion for item B1.
Move to approve.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we will go to Proclamations, item C1, Public Health Information Officer, Washoe County District Health, and you're going to do the, so would you go to the podium?
Wait, we got, I think.
Oh, she's got it.
Jenny's got that.
Excuse me, you got the other one. I forgot who had it. Sorry about that. Thank you.
That's okay. Oh, I beg your pardon. This is a proclamation in honor of Healthy Living Week, and Phil Ullaberry from Washoe County Health District, you've been busy. Whereas over 35% of Washoe County school-aged children are overweight or obese, and 56% of adults in Reno and Sparks are overweight or obese, and whereas unhealthy eating patterns and too little physical activity are primary contributing factors to overweight and obesity, and whereas obesity can lead to severe and chronic health problems during childhood, adolescence, and adulthood, including heart disease, diabetes, cancer, and asthma, and whereas obesity-related conditions now account for approximately 20% of all medical spending, and whereas there are concrete steps we can take right away as concerned family members, educators, planners, healthcare providers, service providers, and community leaders to ensure that our communities, youth institutions, and places of work combat overweight and obesity by supporting physical activity and promoting healthy eating. Now, therefore, I, Jenny Breckis, on behalf of Mayor Kachal and the council, do hereby proclaim September 15 through 21, 2013, as Healthy Living Week. Thank you. Good for you, John.
Thank you very much. We'd like to thank the City Council of Reno for supporting our programming at the Washoe County Health District. Also like to thank City Manager Klinger, Mayor Kachal, and Councilman Oscar Delgado for participating in our Bike to Work Week activities earlier this year, especially our, our mayor's challenge with the bike ride from out front here, City Hall, over to Reno. It just highlights the importance of physical activity and obesity prevention. Also like to congratulate and thank Mr. Mayor for his dogged determination at the health spa, I see him there every morning, working as hard as he can, and hope he keeps that up. I was asked to mention two other things regarding Healthy Living Week, and if I could get the overhead to, to show up here.
Sure. You put it on.
There is an activity at the Boys and Girls Club on Tuesday night, September 17th, from 4:30 to 6:30. It's Healthy Habits Family Night. Everybody's invited to 10, all families are welcome, and it's free and open to the A viewing of The Weight of the Nation, the HBO documentary, will be at the Joe Crowley Student Union at the university the following night, Wednesday, September 18th. That's also free and open to the public, and I understand they're limiting viewers to only one bag of popcorn. And then, of course, the obesity prevention, the obesity forum is held on Thursday, September 19th. That's all day long, also at the Joe Crowley Student Union. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You did, you did recognize the way I pedaled the bicycle in our rat.
Uh, no comment, Mr. R.
Thank you very much. Item C2, Ms. Shebe.
Hi, how are you? Good. I don't know if you can, you can hear me. This is very appropriate right now. This is, um, a proclamation for International Day of Peace. Whereas September 21st is the International Day of Peace, as established by the United Nations General Assembly in 1981. And whereas the International Day of Peace is an annual day of nonviolence devoted to commemorating and strengthening the ideals of peace both within and among all nations and peoples. And whereas the International Day of Peace will serve as a reminder to all peoples of our personal and planetary progress toward peace. And whereas anyone, anywhere can celebrate the International Day of Peace as simply and individually as by lighting a candle at noon. Whereas the International Day of Peace is an opportunity to make peace in our own relationships as well as promote peace in the larger conflicts of our world. Now therefore, I, Robert A. Kachel Senior, Mayor of City of Reno, do hereby proclaim Saturday, September 21st, 2013, as International Day of Peace.
Thank you very much. Mayor Kachel and council members, my name is Patricia Coia, and on behalf of Sierra Interfaith Action for Peace, PSYOP, and the whole peace community of Reno, I want to thank the city of Reno for proclaiming September 21, the International Day of Peace, in accordance with the proclamations of the International Day of Peace throughout the world. Our group, Sierra Interfaith Action for Peace, was founded in 1986 by concerned individuals in Reno, Reno, Nevada, who had been active in peace and justice issues and who wished to establish an organization explicitly for these concerns. In our group, we affirm the power of love to overcome hate, active nonviolence as the path to peace, a belief in the possibility of an end to war forever, the sacredness of every individual, and the power of faith, religious or otherwise, for healing and reconciliation. Our group, Sierra Interfaith, sponsors a peace vigil every Monday evening from 5:30 to 6:00 PM in front of the federal building. We do this to hold a space for peace and to encourage the peaceful resolution of all conflict. We have been meeting for 12 years in all kinds of weather, and we welcome and encourage people of all backgrounds to join us at our weekly vigil. Again, thank you very much for the proclamation and best wishes.
Thank you very much. The other proclamation will be presented to Chris Hocke at the football game at the dedication of the stadium, the, up at the university, and that's where they wanted it. All right, now we'll go to presentations. Item D1, Nevada League of Cities, Wes Henderson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, I am Wes Henderson within Nevada League of Cities. I'm very honored today to have our President Deborah March with us, and with your audience, I'd like to turn the microphone up to her for a few remarks before I make my presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wes, and thank you, Mayor Kachel, and members of the council and city leadership. We appreciate this opportunity to be with you here today, to bring you up to date on the many things that are happening at the League of Cities, and to share how important your partnership is to all of us, I believe. This past year for the league has been transformational. We adopted a new strategic direction for the league that really called out for us to play a much bigger role in the state of Nevada. We hired a new executive director, Wes Henderson, who you've been introduced to. We have seen more dynamic leadership during this last legislative session, and in fact, I'd like to thank Cadence and Meggins for their leadership through the partnership of the League of Cities with all of the cities and their mayors and their councils, as well as our work with NACO and, and other private sector folks across the state. We really made a difference in this last legislative session. We have a strong partnership now with NACO, and in fact, next week, we'll have our joint meeting with NACO and the League of Cities at Lake Tahoe, and I'd like to encourage all of you to join us there. I think it'll be a very informative and educational event. And, uh, you know, I think that we are in some changing times. Clearly, we aren't seeing the funding that we've seen in the past from the federal government or from the state, that we as local governments have to be finding solutions ourselves for the challenges that we face. And, and we can do that much better and more effectively if we're working in collaboration with one another. So with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Wes Henderson, and thank you for this opportunity to join you today.
Thank you, President March. I'd like to give you a brief presentation on the activities of the League of Cities. What you're looking at now is our membership, our current membership. And I want to tell you that there were numerous times during the session when I was asked by one legislature, legislature or another, if all the cities in Nevada were members. And I can't tell you how important it is for us to be able to say yes, because they do put stock in that. These are our current president, our current executive board, our President Deborah March. We will be having an election at the, the conference coming up to elect a new Secretary of Treasury and third vice president. If any of you are interested, I certainly encourage you to submit your name for nomination. These are some of the services that the League of Cities provide to our members. You know, obviously, we advocate on your behalf, both with the, the state government and legislature, and with the federal government. And we represent you on various boards and commissions throughout the state, and we're an information conduit to you. I hope you've all been receiving the new periodic newsletter, the City Courier, that we have started, and if you're not, please contact our office, we'll make sure we get you on the mailing list. We also have an annual conference, and I'm going to talk about in more detail in a few minutes, and also, we are a member of the National League of Cities. These are some of the benefits that the National League of Cities provides to its members. The things I want to highlight today are the annual Congressional City Conference, which is an opportunity for us to go back to Washington DC, meet with leaders from across, across the country, and add our voice, the voice of Nevada, to, to the conversations that develop national policies that relates to municipalities. Also, an annual Congress of Cities and Exposition, which will be held in Seattle this year in November, and in various policy and steering committees. I'd also like to note that the National League of Cities also has a new executive director, a gentleman named Clarence Anthony. He's actually a former city elected official and a past president of National League of Cities. And I think the National League of Cities is going to become more, more dynamic and provide more services to its members. I'd like to touch briefly on, on the past legislative sessions that thankfully has ended, and, and as we move forward. As you're aware, the League of Cities is allowed to submit five BDRs every session. We did submit five this session. We were successful in getting two passed. The first one is AB 44, which the city Henderson and President March were instrumental in. You know, requires the dissociations of planned communities to allow the outside storage of trash and recycling containers, but, but retains the right of homeowners association to require that the containers be screened from view. Second bill that we were successfully getting passed was SB 37, which the city of Reno was instrumental in, in bringing, and this increases the penalties for persons convicted of, for the damage, destruction, or theft of certain property to obtain scrap metal. What this bill does, it makes the payment a mandatory, uh, the payment restitution mandatory before it was at the discretion of the judge, and it also requires persons convicted of these offenses to perform community services, which I think is, is absolutely fitting because they are stealing from the community, so they should have to give back. I also would like to echo President March's remarks regarding Ms. Salsito and Ms. Matiavich. They worked extraordinarily hard on your behalf, and they, and the city of Reno was well represented by them. And if you haven't thanked them, you should. And then, so now, what, what are my plans? As Deborah said, I've been on the job since February 1st. The first four months, I was kind of tied up, but what, what are my plans going forward? Well, this is part of it, to get out, to meet you all, to meet management and leadership of the cities. This is the 12th city since the end of the session that I've given this presentation to, and President March has been with me on several of them. And also, I need to get out and meet the leadership and management of entities that are eligible for league membership but aren't members, and try to encourage them to join us. We're also reviewing our operations, our policies, and procedures to make sure we're doing what we need to be doing it, doing, and we're doing it in a transparent and accountable method. And also, again, prepare for the upcoming conference. So what are the goals? I would like to appear before this governing board at least once a year. Now, that does not mean I only want to come to Reno once a year. I want to come here more to learn about your city. I only live 35 miles away. I am here quite a bit, but I need to learn more about the inner, internal workings of the city. I want to recruit more members. We've invited a couple of entities to the conference that we think are going to be potential members, including the city, the town of Tonopah, so we're looking forward to growing our membership. We need to take a look at our corporate partner program and develop a multi-tiered system. I, I think, right now, we have a one-size-fits-all. I think we're leaving something on the table that we need to bring in and give more benefit to our corporate partners as well. And I also want to learn from you, what you want from your membership in the league. But at the same time, I want to convey to you what we need from you, and that is your participation. And I want to continue to improve our operations, to make sure that we, that we meet your needs, and to enhance the education and training that we provide to you to help you to do your jobs better. Part of that is to expand the league's audio and video communication capabilities. I am a strong proponent in face-to-face meetings, especially our Board of Directors meetings and our conferences, but realize that travel is expensive. And some of the other training that we provide to you can be done either through telephonic methods or, or video conferencing. Also, we need to stabilize our, our funds class sets and cash flow and increase our reserves. Also, want to improve the advocacy that we provide on behalf of our members at both the federal and state levels, and work with NACO where we can on mutual issues. We're not always going to agree, but where we can, it's very important for us to be able to work together. And again, increase our participation in the National League of Cities activities. So if I could, I'd like to give you a brief preview of the conferences coming up next week, believe it or not. We're going to have two general and 12 educational sessions. We have some really good sessions planned, great speakers. You know, I, I think it'd be very beneficial for you to attend. We're also going to have a Business Portal Roundtable with the Secretary of State's Office, update on federal issues. We'll have a couple of lunchtime speakers, a historian from Tahoe and Douglas County, and also a gentleman who's going to talk to us is Will Rogers. And we're also going to have an update on the Sesspos Centennial, and also how to communicate across the generational divide. You know, the theme of our conference this year is building the legacy of local government. And part of that is being able to communicate that to those who are coming after you, what that legacy is and how to continue. And we're also going to have a very robust legislative panel that I, I think is going to be very informative and give us a chance to interact with our, with our legislative leadership. So some of the upcoming events, again, are the conference. We'll also have a Board of Directors meeting at the conference. And the day after the conference, we're going to have a local government summit, which I hope as many of you as possible can participate in. And then again, the Congress of Cities and Exposition in Seattle in November. And then finally, I want to thank you for your membership. I want to thank Councilwoman Breckus for her participation on, on our Board of Directors. Now, I will pledge to you, we will work very hard on your behalf. This is your organization, but we need your participation as well to make it great. And again, thank you very much, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions or any discussion?
I'll just, I look forward to next week very much, and I think a number of us are attending.
Yes, and we appreciate that. We look forward to seeing you after the lake.
Mr. Frazza was very supportive of that and very strong with it, so we appreciate y'all's efforts, and thanks for working with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Economic voting update, Lauren Stoll.
Hello, I'm Lauren Research Stoll. Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you for having me here today. Several years ago, I started a blog to chronicle my adventures in historical costuming. I like to sew old clothes. And while I was blogging, I found that there was a great need in my community, which is an international community, for historical footwear to wear with our costumes. So I started a business that makes historical reproduction shoes for women, as well as accessories to go with them. And I don't have a PowerPoint, but I have show and tell. So I make shoes that are in the style of everything from the 17th century to about 1930, 1940. These are shoes that obviously you're not going to find a museum piece and put it on your foot and wear it, because they're about this big in real life and very expensive. So what I found is initially, the reenactor community on the East Coast and also out here really, really had a need for these products. But from there, the TV, film, opera industries, theater industries have become our biggest clients, order very large orders of these shoes, and they're being worn in movies and on the stage at the Metropolitan Opera, the LA Opera, Santa Fe Opera, all over the world. So, I'm sorry, I'm immensely nervous. So I wanted to talk about why I love Reno as a business location. I grew up here, I went to Reno High School, and I attended two years at UNR. I then went to San Jose State and acquired my degree in animation and illustration, after which I had a background in product design, which helped me when I wanted to start my own business. But I moved back to Reno because frankly, California is a really difficult place to start a business and to live and to get ahead. And I knew that Reno was a very supportive place, because my parents had started a company here called Reno Roofing Company, and I knew that this was a very great community, very business-focused and supportive. So when I moved back here and started this business, I found an entrepreneurial community that is absolutely alive, including, you know, I just learned about this, UNR now has an entrepreneurial major, an entrepreneurial program, which is a wonderful incubator and an accelerator, and there's very exciting things going on in Reno. Reno is also an international port, so where we have our shoes manufactured overseas, instead of coming through San Francisco or Los Angeles to get here, they fly directly into Reno, because we are now a hub, due to our wonderful business climate, for things that are going on all over the world, things that are being manufactured everywhere are coming here and going out there. So I want to thank the city for being absolutely a wonderful place and an easy place to start a business. I had no issues getting my business licenses, everybody was very helpful with answering my questions, and we've been able to grow our, I mean, I was overpriced, it's a habit to say we. I have been able to grow 300% from last year to this year, and we're expecting to turn over a quarter of a million dollars in historical footwear. I mean, it's kind of silly stuff, right? It's a bigger market than I ever imagined, so I'm, I'm very happy to be Reno-based, I'm happy to be from Reno, and I tell everybody what a wonderful place it is. So thank you, City Council, for having a great place to start a business.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for coming in and showing us, and good luck to you.
Mr. Mayor, this is exactly the kind of story that we were hoping to communicate in this series of presentations. It's, it's all about, we've got such tremendous talent in this community, and we really do make it easy for businesses, and we need to tell that story. There are some incredible businesses, yours being one. And you actually have a model of your shoes in, in amongst us today.
We wear those ones.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I love it.
They had not even met, but, but Barb decided she had to go buy those shoes.
So I got to tell you, I spent about two hours on your website last night, so I didn't get a lot of work done, but I'm so impressed. I am so, I just loved it.
Well, your model fits the age bracket you're talking about.
Sit right here. Well, you, you would be surprised, our demographic is everyone from about 15 years old to 85 years old, people who love to dress in historical costumings. So, Mr. Mayor, I think these have your name on them.
You're trying to get me in trouble. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Lauren, really quickly, how long have you been in business?
Officially, just about two years. Before that, it was sort of a, I was trying to come up with business ideas that were related to my hobby, and nothing really worked.
Smart, do what you love, and then it's not like work.
Fail, 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 and then you, you hit the, the big time, so. I work full-time in this business, I don't have a day job. It's constant, marketing, photography, social media, obviously, the product design. I'm extremely passionate about it, and we've grown it to an international-sized business.
Where do you get those, the shoes produced?
They're in China.
China, okay.
Thank you very much.
No, 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 I get it, I understand. I, my, my business started like your business. I, I loved vintage clothes, and I was selling it online, but my personality is such that I wanted everyone to have discounted fashions, and so then I did brick and mortar, but I get it. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll get an update on the North Valleys Regional Park. Mr. Al Rogers.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Manager. Always a pleasure to be here. For the record, Al Rogers, Division Director with Community Services Department with Washoe County. Today, I'm here, first of all, let me thank Mr. Manager and his staff for expediting and getting this agenda item on today. Really appreciate it, very much appreciate it. Today, I want to update you on the Phase Four project going on at North Valleys Regional Park. We've been before this council before on various items concerning North Valleys Regional Park, and certainly, this is one of significance today. To give some context, since we do have new council members since our last visit, North Valleys Regional Park is located just off of 395 in the North Valleys. It's a 154-acre park owned and operated by Washoe County, but certainly servicing the city area of Stead and those other outlying regions in the North Valley and really region beyond that. The original master plan for this park was done in 1994 with an update in 2001, and then most recently in 2011. And what you see before you here is that 2011 master plan with those areas in color being those future infrastructure, future amenities to be built within the park. Of importance to this council, if you look at the north end, that is identified as an area approximately 10 to 15 acres for a future neighborhood park. And we have been in discussions with the city, with the Director of Parks and Recreation Community Services, on citing that location for that neighborhood park at some time in the future. The community outreach, once the master plan was done, was completed last summer through public meetings, through an online survey, and a lot of stakeholder involvement. We came up with the design and the project that is now dubbed Phase Four of North Regional, or North Valleys Regional Park. The community input gave us ideas on what should go into that spray park theme, what the operations and maintenance were certainly considerations in moving forward with this in terms of being a low-impact, low-maintenance type of facility. And certainly, the development in that park being a pre-existing regional park was important in terms of placing a new amenity. What you see before you is what was derived from the community input and put out by our consultant, Stan Tech. This is the site plan and what you'll see, hopefully, within the next 30 days at North Valleys Regional Park in terms of the improvement. The main feature being that water play park as the amenity to the park, but also, there's some other things that were part of this project, and we'll talk about those in just a minute. Drilling down a little bit further, this is the actual splash pad, and I'll talk about size in a minute, but to put it in context, those familiar with Melio Gaspari that Washoe County also operates out in Spanish Springs, this is two and a half times the size of that water park. So, this is a fairly significant recreational amenity that will be added to, again, this Some of the scope and facts. It's a $3.2 million budget, and again, includes the water play park and some infrastructure improvements to the park. As I mentioned, this is a large water play area, 7,000 square feet of just the footprint of the water play park. It has over 15-plus interactive water elements and probably the first in the region of a water play deck. The recirculated water system, we will reuse the water, and we do have a state-of-the-art treatment system in this facility. The capacity will be about 250, primarily focused on public day use, but we will have opportunities to use it for special events. And as I mentioned, some of the other projects or pieces that were added onto this, the community center, which has existed since the 90s out there, we transitioned that from propane and septic over to natural gas and municipal sewer system as part of this project. And also, we replaced the existing playground just out in front of that community center as an amenity to be used by the community, and not necessarily negating the future playground at the neighborhood park, but certainly a consideration when we move forward with that particular element. This was a schematic, again, as we got into the design of this water park, and these are the artistic renditions, and we'll look at some of the real ones here in a minute. But as I mentioned, over 15 amenities, very large water play park, again, looking forward to a very hopeful, popular attraction for this community. And these are some of the recent shots. You can see it has a heavy aviation-based theme. This was, again, through our community input. We have worked extensively with the Airport Authority. If you'll look, and you'll see it when you come out, but the air traffic control tower, which is a water play feature, is actually patterned after the Stead Air Traffic Control Tower. That plane you see being lifted in the upper right is actually a rendition of the Rare Bear, one of the more popular planes during the air races. So, a lot of theming going into this, and certainly, many, many opportunities moving into the future for interpretive programs and educational programs, along with the recreational components that go with this park. The current status, we're about 90% complete. We had anticipated that this park would be done this summer. We did run into a couple of challenges with electrical and some of the soils out there, but again, we are looking at getting it open by the first of next month. Right now, we are shut down. We are doing a major electrical into this park, and will be reopened next week. As I mentioned, the CFO we will have on October 9th, and given if we hit that date or not, we possibly could have a soft opening for the community out there. We do have to obviously test the system once it's built and up. Unfortunately, we won't have much of a season, but we are planning for a grand opening in the spring, early summer of 2014. Next steps, Phase Five, we have already began design on that. Washoe County Commissioners gave approval for $150,000 to start the design work for the next priority in the master plan, that being baseball fields, one Babe Ruth field and one baseball/softball field, along with the design of hiking trails and a dog park. And we do have additional monies from the state for, through the recreational trails grant. So, again, we're leveraging money still to this date with the original water sales right to make sure that this park comes to its fruition at some point. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Dorch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The flat fields, are those, those aren't going to be part of the next phase?
Mr. Mayor, to Councilman Dorch, at this point, no. The design would just be for the two softball fields, hiking trails, dog park. The flat fields would be the next component.
And how much funding's left?
As I mentioned, 3.2, and we're anticipating that we will be at or under budget of this current project. If we hold true to that number, we will be at about $1.3 million left in the capital fund. And council, for consideration also, there is $1 million in a set of site fund for operations and maintenance of all the new amenities put in. So, about 1.3 for capital.
So, where did the other $2 million go?
For clarification, Councilman, the $2 million...
Well, there'd be, there was about a little over $7 million total.
Right.
From the sale of the water rights. So, if this is 3.2, you've got, you're saying you've got about one and a half left, and you've got a million, and so there's about another million and a half that's unaccounted for.
The other million and a half, for recollection, too, this council, along with the Washoe County Commission, also defees bonds and paid a note attributable to the golf course.
That's right. And that was, that was about one and a half? Is that what that was?
Actually, that number was just a little over 2.3 million.
Okay, that was right, because there was interest in the account, too. That's right.
Thank you. This money is and remains in an interest-bearing account.
Right, okay. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Rogers, which golf course are we, are we talking about C.R. Sage? That's a county-operated golf course?
Yes. Councilman Breckus, through the mayor, that is a county-owned golf course currently. It's under full management to a vendor.
You know, I'm having a little hard time kind of drawing the differences between, particularly up in the North Valleys, what are county functions and what are city functions in terms of recreation? You have, you have regional parks, and you have one up there. You have golf courses. We have golf courses. Doesn't sound like you're in the pool business.
Councilman Breckus, again, to answer your question kind of globally, Washoe County in the past few years has really, I don't want to say changed its focus, but turned its focus to providing facilities, providing interpretive programs, and do very, very little recreational programming.
So, we do all the programming, and we do the pool programming, and...
That's the typical model right now. I would say that Washoe County does partner with the City of Reno and City of Sparks when it makes sense, and we do offer and did this last summer, our facilities for programming. So, it has worked in that model so far.
Do you have regional residential construction taxes?
We do.
Are they eligible on regional parks?
They are not. Regional residential construction tax dollars are only eligible for those parks that are 25 acres or less.
Where do you put the, what parks do you have? Do you have a lot of those in your inventory?
We do have neighborhood parks, and we can spend residential construction tax in certain regional parks if they meet the nexus of that neighborhood element or that neighborhood need.
So, if we partner with you on a, on a neighborhood park, that would be our residential construction tax, but it would just be improvements in your regional park? That's the way it's being looked at?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it very much. All right, now, we're going to the consent agenda. Anybody wish to pull any items for discussion? Chair, entertain a motion for approval. Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no.
I'm sorry, Mayor, we on item E1?
Consent agenda.
I did want to pull two items for discussion, A8 and A9.
Which one?
Eight to nine.
Eight and nine. Okay, since we'd already taken a vote, you want to open up the vote? Do we need to open it up for reconsideration, or can we discuss them?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. If you're going to reopen it proper, protocol is a reconsideration, Mr. Mayor.
That's right. So, somebody bring up a motion for reconsideration.
I'll motion.
Do I have a second? Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we will open up items E8 and E9.
Okay.
E8.
Okay, E8. This is related to the ADP. How is the ADP program going in terms of its installation? I guess my question is, you know, that's one question. What is the relationship of this vendor to the ADP? And how much of this item that we're asked to approve has already been expended, and how much of the project is being completed?
Robert Chisel, Finance Director, for the record. The ADP project is currently, we are in the process of going live. When I say we're in the process of going live, the pay period beginning last Friday was the beginning of the first pay period where we are running a final parallel test with our old payroll system to ensure 100% compliance. Of course, as you know, payroll is kind of an important thing. You want to make sure you get right. So, we're right now running live with the intent of printing checks on the ADP system next week, so that I'll probably tell you in the next meeting how well it went, and you'll probably see with your new paychecks how well it went. So, the idea is that your next paychecks or stubs, if you're direct deposit, will be on the new payroll system. Knock on wood, barring any last-minute issues. So, that is where we are on the ADP process. This was a contract for the project manager to help manage the project. Payroll is a very complicated issue, particularly for the City of Reno with the multiple contracts we have. Each contract labor agreement we have have different terms and agreements on how much leave, how much sick leave, how it is calculated, how pay is calculated. So, all that adds a lot of complication to a payroll system, so it has made it very difficult for any payroll system. So, that is why we had a need for a project manager. So, we hired a project manager. We did not have anyone on staff to take that role on, and about 205,000 has been expended to date on this contract.
So, this project manager, who I guess is sitting in HR, when this contract ends, that person will no longer be a consultant, professional services consultant to the city, correct?
Correct. That person actually is not sitting in HR anymore. It's, as we're at that stage, the person is, you know, just standing by. If we need their assistance, we'll come in. I believe the last was in yesterday for a period of time, and that was the final day.
Okay, okay. So, this is a professional services contract where you can sole-source professional services under NRS, but the ADP as a, as a technology product, you did go out for bid on that?
For the record, Kate Thomas, stops for mention of the budget. We did a partnership, we did a joiner with another contract for that with ADP. We didn't go out to bid, per se. We joined it on to the TCPN, the Purchasing Network's existing contract for those services, and that came to council last April.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Eddie Larkin.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, how you doing? Okay, now, we'll get to AeroTech here. Okay, this ended up, it was ran through, and there was a mistake made, so it ended up getting through inappropriately. So, now, the thing of it is with ADP, I kind of see another parking kiosk cluster going on to where this isn't only the end of it with the 250,000 that we spent. You ended up doing a resolution on, I got the resolution number in the paperwork there, to where once ADP goes live, which will be now, they've been working on it eight, nine months. The thing isn't working. We spent 230-some thousand. He's asking for back approval, so this money's already been spent, and we're not even worried about it, kind of, to where it was approved improperly, which there was an error, okay? But now, what if we didn't approve it? Because now, how I look at it is this, we've almost wasted a quarter of a million dollars on this thing. It still isn't live. It's been eight, nine months in the process, okay? Do we not want another parking kiosk thing? Well, now, once it does go live for the resolution, we're going to pay them $1,165,000 if you look at the ADP contract and resolution. So, are we prepared to do that? Then what if it doesn't work? So, I hope at least now, we can get to the bottom line to where if we throw, how long are we going to throw money out the window on this thing? Is to where if all of a sudden, if you give them the 250, can we have at least a point of interest to where if it still isn't working after, an additional 20 more thousand is going to be spent besides the 230? If this thing's not working, we stop? Because I've looked at your budgets, and all of a sudden, we used to spend 1% to 2% on technology, and now, we're up to 9%, and none of it's worked yet. So, I don't agree on it being approved now, okay? And I just see it's not working after nine months, and how much more money are we going to throw away after this thing when we are broke? 580 million in debt, and can't we just leave well enough alone sometimes or recoup from them giant debts that we've acquired? So, I don't agree with it. And then, so, will I speak on E9 after this one?
I'll call you up on E9 when we're ready.
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, how I see it, I ended up finding this in an hour and a half of research, okay? And it was just overlooked, okay? And so, now, how many more of these are there, which there are more? And so, it's like the Dutch boy with his finger in the dike, and this city's hemorrhaging money everywhere, so we need to get to the bottom line to have a system in place to where we can see where our money's going. So, I hope we can be more fiscal and responsible. Thank you.
I recommend that you sit with the financial officers of the city. We're not hemorrhaging. We're not bleeding to death, and nothing's been misappropriated. So, your implications for politics isn't real good.
Well, it wasn't approved correctly, which is a charter.
There was a mistake made. There was a mistake made. You're right.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Nobody's stealing anything. Nobody's done anything. Nobody's done anything inappropriate.
I think there was a mistake, but it was inappropriately done. I'm not trying to point fingers. I'm trying to have us be on a good page here.
Well, why don't you sit down so that you'll be fully knowledgeable and sit down with Mr. Klinger, Mr. Chisel, and figure out where it is so that you don't miss, represent some of the facts.
Well, no, I'm pretty, I found this in an hour and a half, sir. They would have never found it. So, I'm pretty knowledgeable on this.
I don't thank you. Are you a CPA?
No, but I have CPAs, and I'm good at what I do.
Oh, I've got 20 of them. How many you got?
It doesn't matter how many, it's how good you are.
That's good. Thank you very much.
I found this in an hour and a half, and they had never found it, so I did something right.
We would have. Thank you.
Thank you, okay.
That'd be nine, no.
Well, Mayor, I think we need a motion. I am going to support this. I think that it does highlight maybe a little bit about our fractured purchasing approach that we have. We've always had a decentralized purchasing approach, and I think it raises questions that we maybe need to rethink our purchasing and have a more centralized approach. I think that was an organizational decision that was made at one time, and, you know, we don't have a purchasing agent, but, you know, you save money when you invest in certain processes. I also like to say that I think that these technology programs are big business for cities. I was here when the city rolled out this one called the New World. That didn't go as well as everyone had hoped. I, I understand now. And so with this and the Tiburon, I think that the council cannot look too closely and ask staff, you know, for the timelines. And, and I'd like to ask Mr. Manager, since I wasn't here, to give me a copy of that original contract and agreement. So I can know, you know, what was the timeline. It sounds like it's, it's progressing. And I saw in all-city mail that you're, you know, check, working with the different department payroll clerks. Or, so it does sound like it's moving, but this is hopefully just a minor hiccup.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I just make a?
I'll second for the, for discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Did you make a motion?
I did make a motion.
Okay, second. Now discussion.
The only thing I wanted to point out is there was some questioning of ADP as a, a technology product and comparing it to the parking kiosks. There's a vast difference there. It's, you know, 20, I used it for 20 years. And as a business person, I can tell you 620,000 businesses in 125 countries have done their homework. So as a product, it has been well vetted. So to compare the two is, is comparing apples and oranges. So I'll just say that.
And I'd just like to say, I think it's irresponsible to stand up here and say continually tell, tell the public that the city's broke. Because that's not the case. We're not broke. We are paying our bills. Everything's running properly. And I think if you spent more than an hour and a half looking at our books, you would have noticed that. So I, I just think it's irresponsible to come up here and tell the public continually that we're broke.
All right. Have a motion second on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Out of E9.
Call for reconsideration, Mr. Mayor? Oh, did we do that? Did we do them both at the same time?
Which one?
E9.
Oh, we did do a vote on that, yes. We need a reconsideration.
Okay.
Have a motion for reconsideration. Do I have a second? Have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
You know, I, I want to know a little bit more about this. I understand, and it's just come to my attention recently, that a third of the city's workforce is temporary employees. Is that true?
Robert Chisel, Finance Director for the Record. Right now, we have, I guess you'd have to define temporary. We have, there are several classifications of employees with the city of Reno. And then there are temporary service contracts for temporary employment agencies. So if you look at full-time employee equivalents, there's about 1,000. If you look at the number of what we call under 18-hour, they can work up to 18 hours and they're temporary positions. There are temporary positions that are up to six months. And then there are 1560 employees that are kind of in that temporary part-time area. And with those 1560s and then the under 18, there are probably, depending on the time, 200 to 300 of those employed by the city of Reno. So yes, you could, depending on the time, most of them are utilized by parks. So depending on the use of parks and the recreation department, those numbers go up, particularly in summer with a lot of recreation programs, of course.
But some, have some of those temporary employees been on for, you know, seven, eight years as temporaries? Okay, I guess.
Or in one of those categories.
In one of those categories.
And if I might jump in, I just want to clarify because there is a difference and Mr. Chisel outlined it. There's a difference between a temporary employee and a 1560 employee. So when you say we have employees that have been on for several years, you're referring to the 1560 employees. The temporary employees, as Mr. Chisel said, those are good for six months at a time. So to my knowledge, and Mr. Chisel can correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have employees in that category that have been employed for, you know, several years. Where in the 1560 category, we do.
Yeah, for those under that six months, they have to work for six months and then have a break of at least six months. An example of that would be our sewer refund personnel. She works for about three months doing, you know, managing the sewer refunds and doing the paperwork for that. It's, it's about two to three month job. She worked last year and this year. She has not worked for us ever before. I don't know whether she'll come back or not, but that, that's a true six-month temporary position.
And I guess, I guess my question is for clarification on this contract, how is?
This is for temporary staffing, which is for temporary staffing agencies. The best way, you know, I, I don't like to use name brands, but if you think Manpower or you think Kelly Services, you, you contract them to help provide some services. These are utilized a lot by our police department for some of their services. And some of the other departments utilize them for services.
Do these, does employment through the, this contract get vetted through the Civil Services Commission?
No, they do not. These would not be civil services. These would be temporary staffing contracts. They're with an outside firm. They are not employees of the city of Reno. They would be, it, it's just like when you contract for any services. If I contracted for any kind of service, it's with an outside agency and they're providing the staffing. So these are employees of, you know, Manpower, Apple One, or one of those companies.
But they could stay on forever. I mean, you know, essentially for a long time. And I, I guess I have a few concerns about this. I've been reading very carefully the Civil Service Commission minutes. I know Councilman Dorch is their liaison. I think that there's been questions raised about how the civil service regulations are being applied with some of these, what we call part timers or temporaries. Then we're, it looks like through this contract, which I don't necessarily object to, I don't think in concept, we're bringing on yet another classification. And I think there's, there's two sort of questions going on is, one is efficiency of the organization. It seems like the organization, when the layoffs occurred, cuts occurred so fast. And so many of those functions went right down to these temporary people. And, and then also the other question is, how do we vet our workforce? Do we vet it through a, an organization like this? And are we, you know, because there's a dollar on these temp agencies. And so, you know, are we, have we looked comprehensively at the personnel functions of these temporary staffing to see how they're, they're applying to what the department programs are? So I'd like to see this go back down to the Civil Service Commission to give their sense of how this pertains to the bigger picture of all of our staffing.
I think what you ought to do is maybe first, before we do that, is get with Mr. Klinger and stuff so that we understand before we go talking to somebody else or looking into it.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to move forward with this. I think, I think, I mean, the state of Nevada uses it. I think it's a great tool for us to use in our temporary staffing. And I, and I think it'll, it'll kind of bridge that gap of what we're facing with some of the issues that the Civil Service Commission has brought up. I think it puts us in a little better position to handle some of those issues a little bit better than we have in the past. And, and I, and I think it just, it's, it's, I think it's going to be a great mechanism for us to move forward with. So I'm, I'm all for moving forward with this. And I think we've got to do it. And I think the sooner the better, really.
Okay, before we move for a motion, Mr. Larkin, you wish to speak?
Eddie Larkin, for the record, to speak to you about what you said, Mr. Dorch, it'd be irresponsible to say we're not broke. And the reason we're up to date on bills is from forbearance agreements. So I hope you know that too. Or we wouldn't be current on our bills.
We understand that completely, sir.
All right.
And, I mean, and I know you're up here to talk about this item, not other items. But the majority of those bills that you're talking about have revenue streams attached to them that pay for those. Those aren't general fund dollars that go to those. And, and the reason we're getting forbearance agreements on it?
Because we can't make the up-to-date.
Well, but we're getting forbearance agreements on it because they, they have nothing to go after.
I know, because we don't have money.
Well, they knew that going in.
They knew what they were, yeah.
They knew if the money went up, if the sales tax went up, they knew they were going to get it. They knew if it came down.
The general fund, the general fund of the city of Reno is not at risk. The general fund of the city of Reno is not at risk.
Why don't you know we're not broke? Never mind, I'm not going to debate it today. I've had enough of you.
So now it comes to E9 then?
Yep.
And now when it comes to this, okay? So now, Apple One was one of these contracts that are we going to stick to old procedure to where the procedure was? If the, if they spent over $50,000, the city manager, then he has to get it approved by council. So is this just going to, because that one for Apple One was $73,000 that was spent. So now each one over the 50, does he still have to come back to council? Or this one swoop is going to be where they can go over 50,000 and you guys don't revisit it?
No, sir, there was a mistake made and you brought it to our attention? So they brought it up, we'd made a mistake, and now we're going to prove it. They're still coming back for approval.
So in the future, yes, so all of them will still come back?
Absolutely.
More, because I see all these other contracts that were more than just the two that I found. Because, you know, it takes research on their part to find them. So I wonder what the real total of all of them are as well.
Well, as we find them, we'll go through them and do it. If you want to spend the rest of your year, months and stuff campaigning, go through them.
Yeah, well, I just want to be responsible in spending. And I hope we can really keep an eye on the procedures, which I know we all want the same thing. So that they can be approved correctly, we can see where our money's going. Because if they're just going through, sometimes it's hard to find out where the money's going. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
You know, I appreciate Councilmember Dorch's comments that this could be a solution for some of the issues that have been brought up at the Civil Services Commission. However, I don't think those issues have truly been brought to us. And the full role of, of what role temporary, non-civil service employees in, under this jointer would, would do for us. We just have a contract before us. I'd like to ask that we discontinue this so we understand a little bit more about our workforce. It was a big surprise to me to understand that a third of our workforce is on a temporary status. And I think when we approve this contract, the manager has a lot of discretion within department budgets to bring on temporary part-timers all over in every department. We'll see them everywhere. And I just really want to know.
Do you have a motion?
Well, I, this, we're still in discussion. I would like to have the opportunity to look at this a little bit more and have a little more robust understanding than a one-page staff report from the manager about how we're going to employ really our most valuable assets, the people who work for our organization.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve item E9. And I just want to say, when you talk about a third of our workforce being temporary employees or part-time employees, it's, that's wrong. I mean, especially when you look at hours, the number of hours that are worked. It is, it is nowhere near a third of our workforce when you look at the number of hours worked. So I made a motion to, to approve item E9.
Do I have a second? Second. Further discussion?
I'll ask for a comment. How would we know that what our workforce is? When we approved the budget, there were staff numbers under each one. Did those budget numbers include all the temporary people? The temporary people who will be coming on? Will we be seeing all the temporaries who are coming on? I don't, I don't know. Mr. Manager, can you answer that? How many people are bringing, are, is this a ratifying, this is in a ratifying contract? Is that correct?
For the record, Kate Thomas, the budget lists the full-time employees and then the temporary services for like Parks and Rec and police. Those are under each of the department budgets.
In a number, in a, in a dollar amount, correct?
In a dollar amount, correct.
Okay, so say department this has 200,000 in temporary. We were not provided the numbers of how many bodies that is, correct?
Right. The departments manage the number of temporary staff necessary from the, the programs that they have. So youth services.
Okay.
And that's for school care.
And can a department head within their budget line move, you know, through dollars within without going to the council for approval?
Once the budget's approved, they don't need that authorization. If they need to go above that, they need to come before you to augment.
Correct.
The bu, the, the department budget?
Correct.
Not the whole line item for temporary services within their budget?
Right, it would be based on program.
I, I feel that this, the approval of this contract without more understanding of how resources will be deployed could result in ramifications that perhaps the council would like to have additional oversight. So I will not be supporting this motion.
Well, I have a motion and a second. Yes, sir. Mr. Klinger.
Mayor, if I might just jump in here, I mean, part of the, the need for temporary staffing is, is based on seasonal changes and those sorts of things. And so when Mr. Chisel says there are, you know, potentially 200 to 300 of these, I mean, that's at the peak. My understanding is the last report that I saw on the 1560s was, I think there was 170.
174.
174. Sorry, I got my numbers wrong. 174 on that list. So I mean, it, it fluctuates depending on the need. And so, you know, it, it becomes, I guess, in my opinion, it becomes an operational issue on whether or not, you know, you trust us staff to, to execute the, the programs that the council has approved. So.
And Mr. Manager, this practice has not changed, correct? This is, we've, we've been following this practice for years.
The 10 and a half years I've been there.
To fulfill the seasonal needs, particular, yes.
That, that is correct. This is, this is not, you know, this is not a new procedure that, that we've brought. I mean, it's, we, we are clarifying the procedures internally to make sure that council approval is sought when we bring these contracts forward.
Ms. Sheeby?
So these are just strictly part-time? Okay. And, okay.
And they've spelled it out in their budgets and stuff. And if we want to macro-manage and get in and start telling the department heads what to do and how to move around, I think it's a waste of our time. And I don't think this is something that needs to be brought in every time.
Can an individual work 40 hours under this contract?
I think they could. You're talking about under the temp services contract? I mean, I guess I'd look to Mr. Chisel, but they certainly could.
Actually, yeah, they could work. And they, of course, they would be under the same Fair Labor Standards Act of any employee in the United States and any other employee in the state of Nevada as to the rules and responsibilities of the, the Temporary Employment Agency as to what their hours are and when overtime would be placed into service and other requirements.
So what's the plan? Is there a plan to move some of the temporaries who are under our payroll under this, these staffing, the staffing agency's payroll?
Well, currently there are employee, we are utilizing Temporary Employment Agencies today. So there are some that are currently temporarily, are Temporary Employment Agency employees working for the city of Reno. As example, police has Apple One under staff services coming in and working for them right now. Those staff services are being utilized today. This is just to ensure that we, we come to council for any item that's may potentially go over 50,000. And based on our projections, it looks like it will go over 50,000 for some of those departments. We are looking at the, working with civil service on the whole issue of our temporaries, our part-times, and our 1560 employees. We haven't developed a plan yet. We told them we would be coming back to them with a, a draft plan and timeframe at this September meeting. I can tell you at this time, we have not identified a plan of how to address it.
Can you say today how many bodies are currently under these contracts right now? What positions they are?
I, I could find out the number. I can't, you know, it's, I don't have that number.
You could get their number and where they are.
Probably about 10 to 12 are probably under Apple One for varying temporary employment.
But they're all within our budget? And they're all into the items, the line item that we appropriated and everything. So it's called macro-management.
Well, I disagree. And again, I'll call for the vote. I'll call for the vote if we're, we're ready. And I will not support it. I think the council is not giving.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go to item F1. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Okay. Do we need a staff report or we need to? You want to give us a quick staff or does anybody have any questions of staff? Chair entertain a motion for approval of item F1.
Move to approve.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Go to ordinance adoption. None? We'll go to resolutions. Resolution, item one, I won. Mr. Mike Dillon wishes to speak.
Good afternoon, distinguished members of the city council and Mr. Mayor. For the record, my name is Mike Dillon. I'm the executive director with the Builders Association Northern Nevada. And I'm actually here to speak on both this item and the next item very briefly. I just wanted to come here in, in strong support of the ordinance adoption to the code update. I just want to give a recognition to Chief Fernandez and his staff, Eric Simonson, the Building Department, Community Development, and everyone for working with the building, building and construction industry on coming up with, which has been a pretty thorough and long process on coming to agreement with, with not only these codes, but all the codes that we've been working with on a multi-jurisdictional level. And it's, it's really gone well. And I just want to commend the staff and thank you very much for the inclusion of our industry in this process. It's been great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Having no others, come back to the table for any discussion. Chair entertain a motion to accept, I, one.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to accept staff's recommendation and accept the business impact statement.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, motion carries unanimously. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been? Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent on that, too?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Proper notice was given and again, no correspondence was received.
Ordinance introduction.
Which is bill number 6872, ordinance to amend Reno Municipal Code Title 16, Fire, Chapter 16.01, Fire Administration and Codes by repealing Section 16.01.010 adoption relating to the 2003 International Fire Code and appendices and adopting Section 16.01.011 relating to the 2012 International Fire Code and appendices B, C, and F, as amended together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Chief, I, I do have a question or two. Tell me this. You probably all started working on this code revision prior to the fire divorce. Is that correct?
I believe we started the process six to eight months prior to the divorce.
Okay. My question is, I, I appreciate the need for a regionalized approach on codes. But when I read it, and I did, it seems like, from a usability perspective, I know the band seems to be happy, but it seems like there's so many differences between the different services that the code reads a little tough in terms of, you know, there's so many exceptions and so many footnotes for Reno standards, you know, different standards. Do you think in high, I mean, does it really do the job that you were hoping for, or would it be easier to have a separate code that's just a Sparks Reno code where we are so similar?
For the record, my current name is Reno Fire Chief. I think what we did was we were inclusive with the county and all of our regional partners. I can ask our fire marshal to, to speak to that issue. But in short, we did, we were as inclusive as possible so that our codes mirrored the county codes and mirrored those codes that were relative to this general region. I think it'd be counterproductive for us to have a Reno-only code. I think as we move towards more global management, global regional governance, it's, it's only fair to the builders, it's only fair to the business community that if they're going to open up a shop in Reno and they're going to open up a shop in Sparks, that we share the same code so they're not working off of two different playbooks. But we were, as part of this process, we were collaborative. We did include members of the business community, members of the development community, as well as other governmental entities when we, we moved forward in adopting the new code. And we're, we're basically going from the 2003 International Fire Code to the 2012 International Fire Code. There's been a lot of advances in fire protection, delivery, stamp hide, sprinklers, extinguishing systems, et cetera. So, the code is basically catching up to today's modern technology. We did include some items that were regional. Mr. Mayor will recall, several months back, I approached the mayor and certain members of the council with respect to certain items that were problematic to our area, exploding targets that shooters were using out in the county and unincorporated areas that were causing some fires. We were able to modify and regionally accept those changes to our code. So, that's an example of how we met as a region and we addressed specific problems to this region and we included them in, into the fire code. So, the short answer is, we tried to be as collaborative as we could with respect to the region. And we would really like to see the region on the same page.
Okay. Well, good job. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Chair, entertain a motion. I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. City Manager, J1.
For the record, I'm Sharon Spangler. As you all know, we held a contest, a photo contest. And this was not an original idea. This was actually an idea that came from one of our residents who had started using the ThinkReno.org online citizen participation tool. So, we all saw that. And staff thought, wow, this would be a great way to promote our new website, the new Reno.gov design. So, that's basically how this whole idea started. And what we did was, we held a contest on Pinterest, our city of Reno Pinterest site. And in less than a month, we've got 72 entries. Some people wanted to submit more than one photo, but we limited to one photo per person. And the whole idea was, give us a picture that says what living in Reno means to you. So, that's basically how it all happened. And so, staff of our office narrowed the pictures down to three favorites. And now, we're asking all of you to pick the first, second, and third place winners. And these are the, these are the three that we narrowed it down to, A, B, and C. So, I thought what I'd do is, is show them. Did everyone get a chance to, to look at them ahead of time? This one was heavily lobbied in our office. And this is the, the last one. So, what I thought I'd do is just ask each of you what your three favorites were. And hopefully, we'll, we'll get a pretty good consensus that way. Did you want to start, Jenny?
I really, I'm just going to try and stay away from public art judging in this office because I, I know how subjective it is. I, I don't know. I guess A I liked a lot.
Can, can you tell me again, how, how long does this stay up on, what, what does the winner win for second and third?
Well, the winner will win, the, the first place winner and the People's Choice Award will win tickets to the UNR game, four tickets to UNR game. And then, there, we're going to bring everybody back on September 25th and give them a blow-up, a nice blow-up of their picture that they can keep.
Oh, that's nice. But on, on our website, though, we can rotate.
We're going to rotate all of the four winning pictures. And we'll announce the People's Choice on September 25th.
A, B, and C.
A, B, C.
Are we supposed to be ranking them, A, B, C, or just?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I guess they do need. Can you put all three back up again?
Can you help, Jamie, do I have to just?
This is so tough.
Oh, you got it. Okay. Thanks.
I like B, A, C.
B, A, C.
You didn't know this was going to be a big tallying.
So, it looks like A is the first place winner.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, Case Matovich is the city manager. I know this feels a little clunky. This is the open meeting law at work.
Right. That's my way to do this.
Because you are taking action as a body on an item, we have to do this in the open forum. So, we, when we envision these things, sometimes they're a little clunkier than, than we thought they might be.
And I think, do we, so we should probably vote on it now. Since A is the leader, so I'll make a motion that, that A, we accept A as the first place photograph.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
So, then do we want B as the, it sounds like, because B had a couple of first-place votes, too.
It did.
Oh, now, wait a minute. Don't cut out three. Don't cut out three. Let's, you didn't write it down, did you?
Let you, let's do it over again, then we can...
You had them up there. I tell you, don't cut three out. That's right. B did not do three.
Yeah, it did.
As much I love my doggo, B didn't.
But see, my thing was because it's got the river in it.
Yours was A, B, C, A, B, C.
That's beautiful. Well, let's go now. You want, let's make sure, they didn't tally when we went there.
I think B's, it sounds to me like B's second.
Oh, no, no. You, you're adding wrong.
Yeah, because B got first place by two of us. So, therefore, it's weighted more heavily.
Well, it got first place by two, and then it got second place by two or three of us.
There you go. Councilmember Dorch is correct.
Yeah. B had two first place and like, like two or three in second place?
Correct.
Yeah, it's B easily. I move that B is a second place.
I did ma, I did make a comment, get out of the water, Dorch.
Just call for the vote.
Or Dwight. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. I do have a dog named Dwight. And Dwight came over to my house one day. And the dog, the dog was causing a little problem. Dwight's sitting in the living room, and I'm around the side. And I says, come on Dwight, get out of here. Get out of here Dwight. And then, my wife and I, we came in and told him we had a dog named Dwight. He didn't know whether to stay or go.
Well, our, our staff thanks you for helping us with that decision.
Mr. Mayor, I think that all of the, the entries really represented our city.
They were great.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chaser, Reno City Attorney's Office, just for open meeting law compliance, if you could have a vote on the third place because you cannot approve something by inaction.
Okay. Well, I have a motion for a third place. Have a motion, second?
C is third.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. That gets them all. All right. Community Development. Mr. Woodley, how are you?
Good morning, your honor.
Good. Nice haircut today.
Thank you. Good afternoon, City Council, Alex Woodley, Revitalization Manager, City Managers Office. Today, we're going to talk about vacant properties, nuisance, and abandoned properties within the downtown area. Staff received directions from the council to bring forward a presentation or report on approaches, long-term and short-term, to address these issues that we have currently downtown that are impacting the revitalization of downtown. I want to start out first with existing state law that assists us in addressing these type of properties. We have the abatement of dangerous or noxious structures, abatement of chronic nuisances, and abatement of abandoned nuisances. All three of these sections of NRS are implemented in our Reno Municipal Code, which we do use to address these types of properties. In recent years, in 2011, there were some changes to all three sections with regards to civil penalties that are owed to the cities for these type of properties. And the amendment that was created required that, or allowed cities to pursue the costs of any civil penalties owed for more than $5,000. And the reason for that is, is because the, the idea is that if you have a property, as we all know, most of us know, all citations start off pretty minimal, approximately $100. And each citation can be appealed. It takes, it takes a significant amount of time to get up to the total of 5,000. Just with the appeal process alone, it requires us to give at least 10 business days before we pursue further citations. So, if we start off at 100, we work our way up to eventually up to 1,000, which is four other steps. And then, from there, we can get as much higher as is necessary, unfortunately for them. But keep in mind that they always have the ability, property owner always has the ability to appeal any one of the citations. At that point, we have to stop issuing citations. So, with that being, keeping that in consideration, they're very, at this present time, there may be a handful of properties that probably in the past have gotten up to the point where there was more than $5,000 worth of citations. At this present time, we do not have any active cases that have more than $5,000 owed in, in fees and penalties while still having code violations on the properties. Now, recently in 2013, there was a change to that, those amendments that were in all three sections, which were for the abatement of dangerous structures and nuisances, chronic nuisances and abandoned nuisances. But in 2013, there were only changes to two, which was chronic nuisance and abandoned nuisance. Both require court action. So, we have to take the case to court, identify them as a chronic nuisance or abandoned nuisance. It's a pretty lengthy procedure. And with those two sections of the code, which are also in the Reno Municipal Code, the NRS and Reno Municipal Code, the changes that were made to legislature was from, instead of 12 months, it was reduced to 180 days. So, that's just to give you an idea of what we're dealing with and how, there have been changes over the last several years that actually have been helpful for cities to address these types of nuisances and problems that we have in our community. So, first, what we wanted to do was identify which is the downtown area. And instead of creating a new area or drawing new lines, we figured it'd be easier to just use the existing redevelopment area one. As you can see here on the map, it pretty much entails a, a large portion of the downtown. Doesn't include midtown, but that's what we're working with for right now. And within this area, we did identify numerous properties that are vacant. We identified 25 properties that actually have code violations that are abandoned, have been abandoned for more than 12 months. And they have numerous nuisance violations on the properties. So, I would say there was approximately 35 properties, but of that 25 fell under the category of having nuisance problems. So, what we did was, with the help of the Code Enforcement Division, had two officers assigned to the downtown area specifically for this task of identifying the properties and creating cases and addressing them. It's a pretty lengthy process. As many of you know, that dealt with us in, in code enforcement cases, some cases can last several years. It's an issue of contacting the owner, educating the owner, working with the owner sometimes, having to give them consequences when they don't comply, and string them along as, as we need necessary. Unfortunately, some code violations can be fixed in one day. But unfortunately, there's a good amount of them that require months and months of compliance. So, out of that, those 25 properties that were identified, 56 citations were issued. Some properties received three citations, some properties received seven, some properties received five. It's different for each property, depending on the issue that we had at hand. Code enforcement, they will continue to enforce the codes as required. And they will pursue, if the property owners are not responsive and not doing what is necessary to get these, get these properties into compliance, they will pursue through the courts and with the assistance of the city attorney's office, identifying and addressing the properties as abandoned nuisances. As I stated before, abandoned nuisances can be pursued through courts. And abandoned nuisance, as you can see here in the definition, pretty much is if you have a property that's vacant for more than 12 months and has two or more nuisance activities on site. Nuisance activities can include any breaking and entering of the property, any, at any point in time the property isn't secured, at any point in time that there is graffiti, trash, debris, or any type of code violation or nuisance, or lack of lighting, or anything that may render that property to become a blight or appear to be a blight within the community. Now, we have some long-term policies, some thoughts, so to speak. One of which that we thought of was, well, first off, is to make amendments to the Reno Municipal Code to reflect the changes that were done in the NRS with regards to the 180 days and pursuing the civil penalties owed to the cities and pursuing the properties through the abandoned nuisance process. Another thought was creating a design standard for downtown. One of the researches that I did, we have many cities throughout the country that they actually do have a design standard for downtown. Just to give you an idea, I don't know if many of you have seen the corner here of Virginia and Fourth Street. That was a property that we've been addressing. It's a three-story building. It's a small hotel. It's a code violation. We've been addressing it for approximately a year. They've been coming along. They've been complying. They fixed the sewer structure. And one of the requests that we had actually to them wasn't really required by the code, but we asked, could you paint it? Actually, I talked to them, about nine investors. And I talked to them and said, hey, you know, the mayor has stated that he would love to see this building painted. So, when I went out there the first day when they were painting, I saw a notice that they were painting the first floor orange, which I thought was cool. You know, it's a walk-in community. The rest above was, the second and third floor were white. But then, after lunch, I noticed that the whole building was being painted orange. And it pretty much stands out from the rest of downtown. I mean, right across the street, we have the ballroom, which has a certain color scheme. The event center has a certain color scheme. Millions of dollars have been invested. Actually, that same color scheme, that earth tone color is what we have throughout the majority of downtown. But we have this bright orange building, which they told me they did come down to the city to see if we had any design standards. And we told them no. So, they went forward and painted the whole thing orange. So, that's the kind of things that we could look at.
Looks a lot better than it used to.
That is true. Yes, sir.
And soon as they put the new awnings up, it's going to really look nice.
Yes, sir. And we did talk to them about that. So, they're working on that as well. And then, there's other design standards that exist throughout the country. I've saw, I've researched, seen them in cities of population of 25,000 to the city of Los Angeles, all across the country. So, that's one thing to consider. And we think we can also require design standards for vacant buildings if they become vacant. Another possible approach would be creating a downtown maintenance standard. I don't know if you can see these pictures here. I don't know, can we dim it a little? No, it won't matter. Anyway, one of the, the things, thoughts that I had and I saw in other cities was, for example, requirement of a mural, at least on the first floor. So, if you have a vacant building, the first floor, any flat wall surface, here, as you can see, I wrote murals like this or this. As you can see, the one on the right, it looks like graffiti. I don't think we would want that type of murals on our first floor of vacant buildings. Another requirement could be requiring that those buildings that are boarded up to have a nice facade. As you can see in the bottom right picture... As you can see in the bottom right picture, that's something we requested of the ComRoe when, I don't know if some of you remember when Councilman Dustin was here, he had a problem with how they removed the signage that was up there in the facade. So we talked to them, we got them actually painted like that, and it looks very nice. Boarded up areas, they actually painted windows on them, so they look pretty nice. So we think that type of improvement or requirement in the maintenance code would help in beautifying these vacant buildings. Just, just to go back, I'll get to this, but also, I forgot to say, also, in talking to Joe Henry from Code Enforcement Division, the acting manager, he, he has researched vacant building registration, like they currently have in Las Vegas, they recently implemented that. And that's another thing that we're looking at, that we could also implement at the city of Reno, which has, one of the requirements it has is posing the property with a point of contact. So if you do have a vacant property and the police or code enforcement are on site for whatever reason, whether it's a trespassing issue or needing to secure the building, if they have the ability to have a point of contact, that they can get a hold of within 24 hours to address the issue. So that's, that's something that we think is going to be, would be really positive for us. Some issues to consider would be the cost to property owners for new requirements, the impacts on existing or possible new businesses, possible costs to the city for abatement, and I think we had another one that's not on that slide, and it's the possible cost of, oh, the timing for code adoption and the legal process. And that's very important because, as I stated before, it is a lengthy process to get to the point where we're dealing with an abandoned nuisance. It takes several months, maybe even years with, with regards to that. I know for chronic and abandoned nuisance, we have up to 180 days we can pursue, but there's still a process that is required to give them due process, to pay whatever fines are owed and to fix the, any violations that exist. And I will tell you that since we started this, I have been in contact by multiple owners of these vacant buildings. The two code officers, Code Officer Cindy Gil Blanco and Robert Rice, they've been in contact with them as well. I met yesterday with one of the property owners who requested an extension and plans on submitting actual plans for this vacant motel by the beginning of next month. So based on that, we did work out an extension with him for two weeks for him to get some minor things fixed on the property, and then another two weeks so that he can come in with a, submitting plans to the building department. Tomorrow, we're meeting with attorneys of another property here downtown at approximately 1:30 in the afternoon, and they're very concerned, they want to make sure they comply. Another property, I talked to them on Tuesday, actually, we had several phone calls on Tuesday, by Tuesday morning. And they were very, they were very emphatic about getting their properties fixed, and they had no problem with it. The biggest concern they have is lighting, because we never required it before, but we are requiring some lighting on the actual structure. So that is going to be of some cost to them. The thought is, from, at least from my personal perspective, is that there's a cost when you have that building open, whether it's electricity, water, security, what have you, those are costs that no longer exist when the building is vacant. So I don't think that these requirements that we're having on them are going to be that excessive or that expensive. And in return, it actually enhances their property as opposed to making it worse, because as we all know, with lighting and security, you have less vandalism and criminal activity. So, and then we have one more property that we've been in contact with, actually, I had a meeting yesterday with the city manager, he met with one of the property owners, and they have some plans, and they have, they will, they received multiple citations for numerous items, including the removal of these abandoned signs. All properties have been addressed to remove their abandoned signage, so they all will be removed. I haven't had any, I've had contact with approximately five property owners, representatives, and none of them had, had squatted at the requirements that we've listed in the citations. What they don't want are any more citations. So we're working with them on that. So with that being said, I'd like to open it to any questions, council.
Any question, yes.
I have a couple of questions. When you talk about multiple violations, does, does the volume of, or the frequency of the violations expedite or move the ball down the field further for you?
Yes, ma'am, it does. If they don't comply with any citation, what we did was, we gave, we cited each individual citation, so, so that that way we could, it's a much more labor-intensive approach for the, for the code officers, but it definitely gets the ball rolling a lot quicker. So if they don't, let's say for example graffiti, if that deadline date comes and that graffiti isn't removed, and that 100 turns into a 250, and so on and so forth. And that's how it is for each, whether it's the lighting, the signage, the graffiti, the weeds, et cetera.
Okay, so, so this gets to my next thing. Have you worked with the Regional Alliance for Downtown and their good neighbor policy in any of your collecting or reporting of violations for this purpose? I, I encourage you very much to reach out to Roberta Ross. They have developed, and there's nothing worse than having a wonderful property that you're taking care of to only have it next to a property that someone's not taking care of. So there's no one like a, you know, that's going to have eyes on that blighted property like someone who's taking care of the property next to it. So they have developed, the Regional Alliance for Downtown, a very extensive good neighbor program to report and help with graffiti, vandalism, and all of that sort of thing. So I'm thinking there might be a partnership here where we can-
They got that from Alex.
Oh, they got that from you?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, point being is, you just said personnel is part of the, I want to say the lag, but we'll say, you know, maybe the delay or in the, in the process to accumulate these violations. Why don't we partner with them to assist in calling them in and, and reporting them to, you know, accumulate them more rapidly and report them more efficiently?
Yes, ma'am. That's a good idea, actually. I have a copy of that, actually. I just recently shared it with the city manager, because as you know, with my recent assignment of revitalization manager, that is one of my plans is to meet with Roberta, because her and I went over and I created that, and then also with other individuals within the downtown area, because that's a great idea, that's the best way to move forward. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, so once a property has received so many violations, it, what's the 180 days? What happens at the 180 day point?
The 180 days that they recently changed in the NRS is previously, in 2011, a city would have to wait 12 months. Let's say you get up to the $5,000 worth of citations and they're still not complying, and you have this debt in the past, that fines were only a civil, by a civil debt. They didn't have the ability to put it on as an assessment, make it an assessment debt. As assessment debt is treated as a tax assessment. And there you get, you motivate the property owner a lot more because they want to take care of that debt, they have to take care of the debt, in fear of it becoming a tax there on the property. So for those particular situations, those two, instead of waiting 12 months, cities have the ability to pursue it after 180 days, six months. And that was initiated by Las Vegas. I'm assuming they have a lot more inventory than you do.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
So we are making them register as of now?
As of right now, the registering, we don't have that yet, but that is one of the ideas.
Uh-huh. I think it's a great idea, Alex, I, I love it. And I love what you've done. I know you've researched this and, I mean, you're very passionate about it. And I think if you don't live downtown, then you truly forget what's going on. I mean, when I did my ride-along, and I'm getting ready to do another one shortly, it's, it's truly an eye-opener. But I think as a city, we have to send a very clear message that no longer. And so I think whatever we can do, as soon as we can do it, would be extremely beneficial because there is a lot of movement and buzz starting to happen, especially downtown. But what is the process in order to do that, that registry?
At this point, what we would have to do is, I talked to Joe Henry, he, he's got all the paperwork in place, and what he would do is bring it before the council, start the process like we do with every other ordinance adoption, have some meetings, do some public input, and then bring it before the council.
Right.
Take a couple of months.
Okay, no disrespect to you, and it's not you, it's government. But I don't want to see this like six months down the road or when I'm not elected anymore. I really, so, I mean, if, this is something that I can help in any way, or, you know, but I think it's imperative. And I'm glad that you're doing this, and like I said, I know you work really hard at it, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
You know, I think what you explain is, is an approach, and it's an operational strategy. But I think it's incumbent upon this body to take a step back and think about what we're really trying to achieve. We're trying to achieve a vibrant downtown. And, you know, that's more than an enforcement, and I get really nervous, you know, as a former regulator, you know, kind of saying our downtown approach is enforcement and possibly more regulation without really having the vision. I mean, he just articulated some property owners who came down and looked to us for some guidance, "Can I paint my building orange?" But think about investors, okay? Who are looking to see, you know, because a lot of these property owners, they don't have plans for these properties. They're not going to open a business. And, you know, but investors come around, and they want to shop around, and they want to see what the vision is for our downtown. Lot of times they hear, "We want a university downtown." Well, where is that explained in any document, any policy adopted by this body as the vision for downtown? We just don't have it. And that's why I'll repeat my call for a downtown plan that goes through a public process, brings all these disparate partners in, and talks about, this is the vision. I mean, you talk about maybe extending the Riverwalk design improvements to a different area, those are kind of dated, they're kind of difficult too, some of them on the stamped concrete. It's time to revision our infrastructure downtown, it's time to revision even, you know, the, where we want to, some of the circulation, the design standards. I have been in more than one battle on design guidelines, and, and I know that we really need to have a, a big talk about that, but it has to be in the context of the vision. So all, I think I've shared with a number of the staff, I've been watching very closely, Fort Worth, Dallas, which is going through a downtown visioning process, very collaborative. I think we need a plan for downtown. And, and I hope we will get there very soon, because I, I am concerned again that, you know, if this is our downtown approach, enforcing vacant properties, I think we've done this, I think we need, particularly as a new council, the big ideas, and then follow the implementation steps under there. And, and I, I get a little nervous when this is our downtown, you know, people look at the community, "Well, this is the downtown strategy." Oh, I would hope we would think bigger. I agree with you.
I don't think this is our downtown strategy.
Right.
This is getting it cleaned up and doing things.
Right.
I think we do have some programs in, in the past, and I think maybe we should have a little workshop talking about what we want downtown to be, and we can do that.
That's a good idea. Yeah. And I agree with you, Councilwoman Breckus, but I think Bob is right, you know, you have to have these steps in place. But it's great that you look, you know, for the bigger vision, because I definitely think we need that, especially for investors. I've been meeting with a lot of them, and, you know, their remarks are, you know, it's really important to hear what they have to say. But I agree, I agree with you, we need a bigger vision, for sure. But a marathon, not a sprint.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Fred Trenier, Community Development Director. And just going on to that bigger vision for the downtown, and city staff has been working with the manager on strategic priorities and creating these action plans. And part of it is creating that university town in our downtown. And so we have actually engaged the university, and we are inserting ourselves in their master plan process. Currently, right now, the master plan for the university stretches essentially from Sierra Street all the way over to Sutro. And essentially, we're looking to turn that to the south and, and bring that connection between the university and our downtown. Again, what Alex is doing is, he's addressing some of the here and now, some of our, our properties that nothing has, has gone on for a while, and addressing the immediate. From a long-term perspective, we're actually kicking off a master plan process with the university in October. And we look forward to working with them and RTC and creating that linkage between the university and our, and our downtown.
Well, but, you know, it's, it's broader than that. We had a public comment, and she called me earlier in the week, one of our Arlington Tower residents. Do we know who our residents are? Do we know if they're, you know, how we can best use our residents who have a lot of energy, a lot of impersonal investment in downtown, and collaborate, and what, what energy they want to put into this effort? We need to really have these discussions, and I hope they won't just be narrowly defined with the university, because there's other people involved, and some maybe we haven't even looked to or thought of.
Well, and there's four or five property owners downtown. There's not a lot of property owners downtown. There's three or four property owners downtown that own all of downtown, just about, maybe five. And I think that we need to get them together and see what they want to do, what we want to do to the faces of the building, how we want to do it, and go forward with that.
I, I have a question. The graffiti task force that was created, and you've, there's just been one meeting so far, right? There's another one, I think, on Monday?
Monday.
Um, the, the makeup of that, and I know it's only 12 members, and this is maybe something that would require more members. Because of the open meeting stuff, we, I wasn't able to attend the last one. Did, did those that did attend, did you find value in the, in the feedback and in the makeup of that task force? In other words, I'm, I'm heading to a downtown visioning task force to get the people that want to be involved. University, downtown property, city staff, to see if we can collaborate.
Well, the graffiti, as you know, is a citywide problem, and, and I think that is a, you know, a concerted effort of its own, it's very specific. But the committee that's really meeting is the kind of working group under the chiefs, police chiefs kind of auspices of the downtown maintenance assessment district and the police maintenance assessment district. And they've had several meetings. And as the liaison to the maintenance district, I've attended, and they're going to have a workshop that Friday, we're all at League of Cities, they're going to have a long-term workshop. But that is really the group that we have more or less convened, talking about downtown. And it seems like, you know, those were about those assessment districts we had and who pays what. But it seems like when we've had those meetings, and I think we've had two, every third or half the discussion is these bigger issues about downtown. So maybe that effort morphs into this more collaborative, because I think there's some frustration in that working group that their tasks, their assignment is this big and the issues are this big.
Well, well, maybe, maybe, and again, we might, we're probably getting off topic, because I, I see these as, we don't, we don't stop the efforts of one to, to, while we envision the other. I think they can be going down the track at the same time. But I would suggest if that's got activity and value, maybe there's members of those committees which can be rolled in with members of city staff and the university, and maybe Regional Alliance for Downtown, or the downtown property, a few of the downtown property owners to, to get this moving, and EDON and, and those sorts of groups to formulate another task force.
And I think that's one of the reasons the city manager made the reassignment, from his experience and stuff, to assign Mr. Woodley to this to start addressing. And then you need to really get involved, the property owners downtown, not the people that are running businesses or anything else, but you need to get the property owners involved. Because at one time, several years ago, we had a deal where we could get federal funding to remodel the fronts of these buildings and come up with a set. And none of the property owners, even though it was 3% or 4% money, none of them wanted to buy into the program to do anything. So we're going to have to, I think you get those property owners, not staffs, but the property owners, try to get them involved and see what they want.
And again, through the mayor, it's a relationship aspect of it. You need to know who owns properties downstairs or downtown to be able to have an effective implementation. But regarding the UNR, City of Reno master plan process, that will be a public process, it'll be a collaborative process.
Sure.
And we'll definitely be reaching out to EDON and members of the, the maintenance district and the city mayor, or to the chiefs group, to be a part of that, that process. Again, we're, we have inserted ourselves in the UNR master plan process, so we're going to help drive it.
Looks great.
But if I might add, in terms of our planning process and our downtown plan, we don't have money in the budget right now for that, I understand. Maybe we need a scope of what that would be. I think because there would be, like any plan, you have a circulation element, I mean, circulation is critical. RTC, as the MPO, has planning money, and they can be contributors. So maybe we need a, a scope of what a downtown plan would be and, and, and look at the budget implications, because I don't think we have the in-house resources to manage it the way a Fort Worth, which is really a city that looks like they are moving forward in planning for their future, is doing it.
And through this collaborative process, we have already engaged RTC to be, to be a part of this process, because they do have monies to go towards the master planning of the university in the downtown area. So we're partnering with the people that we need to partner with also that have some resources like RTC.
Mr. Mayor, if I might jump in, I think one of the things that might be helpful for council, since, you know, I think a lot of you are hearing about this master planning effort that's going on with the university for the first time, what might be helpful is for us to put together a presentation on what is happening, and then get the council's feedback into, and we can outline for you, you know, the, the process that we're going through with them, who's involved, you know, all of the steps along the way, and then council can obviously give us feedback on what that looks like.
Well, it hadn't been- Well, it hadn't been a secret that we're working with the university, so, uh, we can go from there. But I know several property owners that are, have buildings and stuff in Dallas and Fort Worth that are very dissatisfied and they think their cities are about 20 years, uh, further behind than we are.
Sir, may I make one more suggestion on that front for efficiency sake and to kind of move this maybe a little more quickly? Can we break up into smaller groups and have that presentation rather than having it in this forum and waiting for another meeting and?
I think, I think it would, I think it would actually be beneficial to have it in this forum because then if we want to provide direction, we can. I think it's, I think it's, I think it's more appropriate. I just think that, because if we, if we see that we want to move, provide some direction, we can do that.
We could have a workshop with, with this.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. You too, Mr. Woodley?
Alex, what do you, what does he need, what do you need from us?
Uh, actually, I think I have a bunch of orders, which we are sending in, uh, creating the registration and moving forward with the property maintenance for downtown and making buildings.
And keep getting on the people for letting their people, properties be dilapidated and run down, like the five motels downtown.
What about, even if it's temporary, a design standard or at least a palette of colors? I mean, are we? Did? I, but even in an interim, let's say a property owner, in order to not delay him or her from cleaning up their property, do we, we want to eliminate or just?
I, I think, um, it would be a big stretch to, for us to adopt a, a color palette, really anywhere in town. Um, uh, I thi, I think he's on the right track on some of the, the, the design standards in terms of the security and lighting and all. And so I, I would think that that would be the approach.
And I think that's what this, excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, for right now, standard procedures for us when we're working with people to come into compliance, we do make suggestions. Uh, we had a meeting yesterday with, uh, city manager and he made a suggestion and the developer, he jumped right on it and said, we'll make that happen. So it does, it's a, as Fred stated earlier, it's a relationship type thing. So, and we do do that, and we will, and we will.
And we haven't talked about the, the districts that are within this area, like the, um, entertainment district. And so that, that kind of parlay's into, you know, the, the color palettes, I mean, that would be, I, I think that we need to, um, look at what we've already got and don't complicate it with putting yet another overlay on it. Um, and I really want us to take a look at those districts and see how they overlap into this one. And maybe that's where we should really be playing off of, are those individual neighborhood districts that, that we've just kind of created without necessarily intending to.
I think that's a great point.
Yeah. Yeah.
And you know, the previous council, uh, when we were doing the retrack, some of the funds out of the retrack were used to clean up Virginia Street, get rid of the pavers that were here, put in the trees, put in the candy cane lights all up and down Fourth Street, all along the track, all along Virginia Street, along Sierra Street, Center, First, Second, and those things and over by the baseball field where they just redid the curbs and gutters and all those type of things. Uh, but that's where a lot of that stuff, uh, with some of the refinancing of bonds and things, we were able to convince them that they were part of the retrack and that's why we were able to clean up downtown. Okay, but keep it up, you're doing a good job.
Move to accept staff report.
Second. I, I just have one more question for you. Okay, so once all the timelines have, have expired, and let's say you get a property owner that, uh, never responds, doesn't fix his or her property, what, what, what's the end game? What happens at that final date? Or is there a final date?
And that is one of the things to consider, I had the last slide, is exactly that, is that, consider what are the costs and what are the next steps if we were to have to end up acquiring one. Prior to even getting there, though, staff would contact the council, uh, whether it's via this format or through memo to inform you of where we are with a specific property because we all feel right now that we have to make sure, nothing's going to just stay in limbo, we're going to make sure that there's a completion. And if not, we're going to bring forward to you where we are with this particular property.
And what are options for bulldozing or whatever? Okay.
And just to give you an example, we did this years past with the Zanzibar, that was a property where the city actually ultimately did go in and took action on the property that's across the street from the Pepper Mill, and that did come before the council.
Okay.
And the decision was made and action was taken and we took care of that property.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to, you want to add a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item K2, Mr. Larkin. You don't need to buy TV time.
Jesus.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, before we get started on this item, um, in talking with the city attorney on this item, um, it's probably better that I recuse. Um, and there's, there's possibilities that, um, I could be, um, a party to this.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. There's a possibility, given the court proceedings, that any of the council members who, um, had served in office long enough to be, have applicable term limits applied to them in the office of mayor, if it is determined they do apply, that they could become a party to the action. So we recommend any of those, uh, council members abstain from voting on this item.
So based on that, I will recuse myself from this item.
I will as well.
Hi, Eddie Gordon for the record. And I would also like to request, no disrespect intended for Hillary and Oscar, because they're going to be right here in the newspaper. It states where Jessica's going to be doing a fundraiser and then Hillary Sheevey and Oscar's going to be supporting Ms. Barazza. So should they have stayed as well?
Nope.
No?
No.
Okay. All right. So anyway, what I have for you is the fact that, okay, now in the past, when they ended up doing the AG opinion, of course, that was a while back, a year, year and a half ago, or whatever, it was a while back when they said they could run or whatever, and then it came out in the paper or something. It was a while back. But now since, there's been new legislation at the last legislator's thing that came down and that's AB nine, okay? Now through that legislation, it does state that the council members are like the mayor, they all have one vote, and that's going to probably be separated because it's never been written down to this point. So in January, this legislation kicks into place. So therefore, respectfully, you know, everybody's served their time on this council and stuff like that, but I think it's time for the city to move forward and it's not through people looking for jobs and, and being part of the past. So I think there needs new blood now. And I hope they really look at this because now we're Sam Dene and I need that hundred bucks because my attorney's going to be looking into this, too. I don't have as many as you, Bob, I just got a couple. But they're going to be looking into this and seeing about an opinion or suing or whatever we're going to do. And then it goes before a court and we can get a decision and give people in the public enough time to where it's going to happen one way or another. And then if they can run, I respect that and you move on. But we do need an answer at this point. So that's what I'm getting at and it needs to be before a judge so we can make that true educated opinion to see who could run and who can't. And give people enough time to where new people could come in or whatever's going to occur, or if it's them, it's them, and then I respect it. There has to be time for a proper opinion in front of the court so we can decide if this is legal or not. Because I think on the spirit of law, you know, when it comes to the county commission, they'll have one vote sent on every agenda item. When it comes to city council, the mayor sits on every agenda item, votes on every agenda item, and they all have one vote. Therefore, the spirit of law, he is part of the council. And then when it comes to Sparks, that's the only place that's different because the mayor doesn't sit on every agenda item, he only votes to break a tie. So I hope they can see it that way. We'll let people decide what's going to happen on that, but that's how I stand on it. Thank you.
So you do support, you do support us doing this?
Well?
Or don't you? You said, you acted like you, you supported us doing it. What do you, you're confusing.
Well, at this point, unfortunately, the people have passed work here, so I hope it's not biased on the research we'll be doing here to let them do it, so.
That's why we're going to court.
Yes. So I guess I support if we can get an answer on which way it is or isn't.
Legal, do you have an opinion down there? I mean, I know there's been a legislative opinion, there's been a, you got North Las Vegas has done one thing, Henderson's done one thing, and, and I would like to get it cleared.
AB nine was the one they just approved. And it's kind of states what's going on.
Okay, legal counsel, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. The clerk's office and our office brought this before you today because we outlined in the staff report the timing of consideration that if there is a elector challenge under the provisions under 293 and 293(c), which are chapters in the NRS, that would have a very limited timeframe to be reviewed by the court and, and give it due consideration. So this body is in control of the elections of the city of Reno. You have a choice you can make here to provide us authority in coordination with the clerk to see if there is an avenue that we can provide or obtain a legal opinion on the Attorney General opinion that was issued. The Attorney General opinion, it's copied in the staff report, indicates that the office of mayor is separate and distinct and that members who have served term limits as council members can run for the office of mayor. The Attorney General opinion is an opinion of the Attorney General. It has not been codified or supported by a legal opinion from a, a court of law. And so that's why we bring this question to you because we would like, we think it's appropriate to give the citizens of Reno sufficient time to understand who they're voting for and that the elector process is valid in that the names that are placed on the ballot can run and hold the office. So that's why we bring it to you. You can have two methods, you can, you can give us authority to do it now, you could wait. This council has authority to wait until an elector, which means a person in the community, any elector, challenges the candidates. So it's your choice, but we felt that you needed to have the choice and then you can make it.
And isn't there a legislative, Legislative Council Bureau has put out a different opinion from what the city, from what the Attorney General said?
I have, um, requested, I cannot obtain a copy of that if it was issued because that would have been a private opinion to a legislator. So I don't have information on that directly.
Okay. Ms. Sheevey?
Um, when is the period to file? Can you file now?
The, no, the filing is the two, first two weeks in March for the city, for the city offices.
All right.
It's March 3rd, 2014 to March 14th, 2014.
My, okay, so my only, my concern is, is that if someone up here wants to run for mayor, shouldn't they spend their own dollars and resources instead of public funds to do that?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's, that is a, something you could consider. You could determine that, no, you don't want to spend.
I just don't feel like this is city business or it's not, it's like, you know, it has anything to do with what you do. I don't, just me personally.
No, I understand, but I think personally.
That's maybe a reason weighing on one side or another, but this council does have authority over the election, so we thought it was appropriate to bring it to you for decision.
And I don't think an individual bringing the lawsuit is going to get the results.
And what are we liable for, I guess? So if someone comes to you and files this lawsuit, what is the liability?
Are you talking about monetary liability that the city of Reno would have? We don't have exposure to pay damages like a, a slip and fall case. The, the, there is no exposure for attorney's fees. Really, if somebody challenges a candidate under 293, that person challenging could potential have exposure for, for recounts and things like that. So that's different than the city.
Okay.
But you could, you could have this thing go all the way down to the day of the election and people not knowing who to vote, who they could vote for that's going to get set. And you could set up with a very undesirable individual ended up being your mayor.
Yeah, I, I think we.
No, we just changed the logic off today.
You don't get to leave. Um, you know, I think in, um, getting judicial clarity for the voting public of the citizens of the city of Reno, I think it's, it's, I think we need to do this so that people don't get down the road, uh, through their research or their finances or their support to only have those be thrown out or them having to start over. So I, I think it's, in my opinion, I think we have to, in due respect to the voting public and the taxpayers, um, get judicial clarity on this.
I think it helps the citizens clarify who they're voting for and stuff instead of waiting until the last minute to find out.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I, I see it differently. This question applies to five citizens in the city of Reno. All five sat up at this body, some for even 20 years, okay? They had the ability numerous times through their role as the city council members to clean up the charter. They never took this on. Now we want to go to the courts with our scarce legal resources to answer this question. It's presidential in nature. What happens next time when the question raises up, uh, you know, is Jenny 18 and eligible to run? I mean, we could be going down a very slippery slope that we are going to interfere with questions of a theoretical nature about our elections, and I don't see it. And there is some precedence for this. And this is with the school board race about when term limits first came in. There was an incumbent who did not feel that, and she represented, you know, Southwest Reno, so I remember this, she did not feel that term limits applied to her. And her challenger said, I do believe that term limits apply for her and I'm going to file. And it was all reside, resolved well in advance of the, the closing of the ballots and all. So I, I have faith that the right thing will be done, uh, for the courts. I also have faith that individuals who are not one of these five individ, you know, the individuals who seek this office who are not one of the five, it's a private action for them. And so I, I do not feel that this is our fight to engage in. I, I really don't. I would have liked to have seen the charter bill cleared up a little bit more rather than everything, you know, there were things in that charter bill that we got when we came on, remember? That I questioned and, and, you know, we could have answered it through that whole session and we didn't. And, and so now for us to want to jump into court, I, I don't want to go there. And so I'm not going to support this.
I, I personally think that this is something we need to do to clear the error so that all the candidates, if they can't run, they can't run. And, uh, you've got until March and they can figure it out what's going on. But I really do personally think that we should go through this. I don't see this as an expensive lawsuit, uh, or anything of, unless filing papers and getting, uh, agreements and things.
I just feel like the people that are running should have to pay for it and not the city.
Well, except here, let's get, let's, here it says, uh, financial implications are not known at this time. Can we get some, maybe some input from legal on, other than filing fees, what's really involved here?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, really, it would be the filing fees and it would depend on what court we filed in. For example, um, if the lawsuit was, if we brought in the Attorney General into the lawsuit, then we may have to file in Carson City. So we may have to file, uh, to have fees charged there. But, but here we don't even pay court fees for a second judicial filing. So really, the resources are what Councilmember Breckis indicated. It is the resources of the city attorney's office that you would be designating to this product. If a council member, a prior council member determines to come into the suit for any reason, we would not be exposed for their attorney's fees and costs and they would have to pay that on their own. Uh, I might add that this is a Nevada constitution issue, it's a term limit issue. I do see it a little bit differently than, you know, if you're, um, live in the city of Reno or an 18-year-old, um, over 18 to run for office. Those are flak facts. This is a, more of an analysis that the, I think it's appropriate to give the court time to conduct that analysis. And the concern is, it's just a short time period. Yes, Councilmember Breckis is right that other contests have gone through and the courts have been able to react timely enough on it. But in checking with the city clerk, she indicated due to the overseas ballots and, of our troops and things like that, that our timing, um, we have to get into Washoe County, our ballot language and the names on our ballot would be before we even have to put this into the court for decision. So that was the concern.
Tracy, is it? Oh, sorry.
Excuse me, Oscar.
I, uh, I understand where Councilwoman Sheevey and Councilwoman Breckis are coming from in terms of, uh, putting the cost onto the, the person that decides to run by. I think it's our, our duty as a city to, to be clear for the voters. Just thinking about the person that may not have the money to file this, uh, and to, to judge this and, and keeps them from running. I think it's our, our job to be clear with the constituents and the residents as to who can run and who can't run. I guess at the end of the day, this is all being theory because no one's filed. And so we want to make sure that this is clear and crisp for, for voters as they, as voting comes in March. And we have good candidates for people that decide to run.
Well, and I guess my, and I guess my only other comment is from a cost perspective. I think, I think, didn't Washoe County have to reprint some ballots one time? And there was a dollar figure attached to that and it wasn't small. So I guess when I weigh the expense to the taxpayers of that versus the filing fee or not to, to get clarity, judicial clarity, to me, it's, it's an easy decision to make.
Ms. Sheeby?
I guess, Tracy, I just wanted to ask you, I mean, do you see cities get involved in, in political agendas? I don't know. I mean, to me, I just don't feel like this is a city issue, but is there other cases?
Yeah, Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office, there is an ethics code that says city council cannot put money out in support of or against a candidate. So this would not be in support of or for against any individual candidate or group of candidates. What it would be is the application of the Nevada constitution term limits to the offices of city council and the mayor. So yes, you're right that normally that is, but I don't, I don't see that this is the same type of litigation that you're thinking about. And we would not recommend getting involved in any individual candidacy. If an elector challenge does come in, we will just send it on to the court to have them fight about it. And that's the choice you have. You can have the electors step up to the plate and bear that fee, or you can have us determine if there's a method to answer the theoretical question. So it's up to you. Either way is acceptable and either way are appropriate forms.
Mr. Mayor, you know, let's, let's think this through, okay? So we go into the courts. Now, you know, it's interesting because this attachment is written, I think, to Mr. Cadlec and it says, well, you sent me a letter and requested our assistance. And I think I've seen that letter in the past and that letter was perhaps a little leading on what the city attorney's opinion was. And so if we get in, are we going to make a point of, well, we think the mayor's office is separate and distinct? So let's think about when we get into this proceeding, how we will represent ourselves as a body. Because, you know, are we going to take a position? Let's say someone else, Mr. Lortner, someone else comes in as a private party and sues us. Then we've got two conflicted members who could also be parties and we could have to seek outside counsel. I mean, this could go crazy. We could also get tossed out on a ripeness issue. So if, if the body wants to go into this, let's be clear on the direction to our attorney and mindful that our attorney, once we give him the go-ahead to go in, he calls the shots on how he litigates this.
Right.
If I may speak to that point, Mr. Mayor. John Cadlec, Reno City Attorney. We are simply, if this council approves us going forward with this, and there are actually only four people that are eligible that it would apply to, because Councilman Guston has only been in two terms, so he would technically have one more term anyway because he was only in for eight years, so he would technically have a-
I, I think you're incorrect.
What's that?
Councilman Guston only served eight years.
You're forgetting-
And anybody, and term limits didn't apply to any other council member other than those that were sitting in the last council. So it's Councilman Iasi or former Councilman Iasi, former Councilwoman Haraza, Councilman Dorch and Councilwoman Zadra are the only four that apply to. But anyway, the point is this. We're simply going to present the facts. We, I hate to use this adage, but I've used it before, we don't have a dog in this fight. All we're going to do is we'll present the facts to the court and let the court decide it whatever they want. And whatever decision they come up with, we will be happy with and the clerk will be happy with because then the clerk will know which candidates can file for the mayor and which candidates can't. So we will simply present all the facts in a very straightforward, objective manner. We have no intention of shading it one way or the other. It's, it's the court's decision and whatever they do, we will be happy to live with that decision and the council will, and mayor will have to live with that decision because the court will have decided it.
Well, I guess, you know, question true to him is, you know, the crux of this is going to be what are the ceremonial duties of the mayor? And we had a little discussion up about that and I think those are unclear under our rules and interpretation. So how will you represent the ceremonial duties of mayor? Do you see you being asked to clarify that?
We will simply put what the charter says. The charter says they have ceremonial duties. If the court needs clarification as to what those ceremonial duties are, the mayor can go forth and testify as to what he does as ceremonial duties. We're simply going to present the facts. That is what the charter says as far as what the duties of the mayor are, what the charter says as far as what the duties of the city council members are. The court's then going to, if the court needs additional clarification, they can seek that. In other words, they can be, in this type of instance, they can probably be a finder of fact as well as a ruler on law and they can ask the questions that they deem appropriate. We're not going to take a position one way or the other. We're simply going to present what the charter says as far as each of these offices, let the court decide.
But it seems like we do have a dog in the fight if we are asking for this opinion. That's just my, my thought, but it does.
You know, I'm, I'm, again, I, I think we, we need judicial clarity on this and this is the way in which we go about getting that. So I, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Show the vote, three, two.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office, you would need a four, two vote because of, four, four ones, excuse me, because four is a quorum of this council.
Excuse me, four is a quorum?
Two, two are out. We didn't, we could continue it. We could issue a legal opinion that would reduce the quorum, but we have not issued that legal opinion for the quorum for this. So you could continue it and we could issue the legal opinion to reduce the quorum.
So it sounds like we're going to keep it a continuous or just it's not going to pass, right?
Right. It, it would not have passed with a three, two vote.
So explain to me what you just said, what we need.
Yeah, that, for council to pass something, it requires a majority of the body and that would be four.
Not the majority of the sitting?
No, the majority of the sitting body could be reduced if the City Attorney's Office issued a written legal opinion on the two members who abstained. That opinion has not been issued. You could continue it to see if that opinion would be issued. It would likely be issued because I, we do believe they should abstain because they could be a party to the lawsuit. But to technically do it, you need a written opinion in the record.
I, I'm not going to support that, but I also want to clarify, to proceed in litigation, is there a super majority required for that? Wasn't there something related to the attorney's office that requires a super majority?
Councilmember Breckus through, through the mayor, it's a majority for litigation. I would have to look at what you're thinking of. I think it's a different matter.
Councilwoman, if I might jump in, I think maybe what you're thinking of is the hiring of outside counsel.
By a super majority?
Oh, yes, yes. If that's what you're thinking of, that will, thank you, City Manager.
Excuse me, Ms. Sheeby?
So wait, how does this work? We can go back to reconsideration and talk about those areas?
Yeah, Councilmember Sheeby through the mayor, yes, you could reconsider this if you chose to. Someone who voted against it would move for the reconsideration.
You're making a motion to reconsider or are you thinking about it?
I, I have, I have a question though, from a, can we go back to the abstention on the UNR Farms vote and the, the reasons for the abstention? I, I'm just trying to draw the line between the personal relationship between you and one of the candidates running for mayor.
I have a dog in the fight for sure.
Okay, so that being said, I'm wondering if-
Well, I mean, if anything, this will only help everyone that wants to run. And I feel, personally, I feel that it's, I don't think a city should be involved in this and I feel like it does spend taxpayers' dollars personally.
But we're, but we're going to spend-
I think I'm doing the right thing because of that.
Okay, and we can disagree with that because I think the dollars that will be spent and potentially have to be redone or reclarified will be, will far exceed the filing fees and some of the staff's time to get judicial clarity on this.
Shouldn't those candidates go and get that? I think that's what I feel. I don't feel that it's a city's place to get into political questions and business.
But it's based upon representatives of the city.
Just trying to clarify for the secretary so that she doesn't print up ballots and then find out later. And then people that are overseas, they get their ballots later and, and they're not counted.
You know, Mayor, Councilmember Jordan, even if the two of them were conflicted out, it would take four people to approve this under the, the rules that, you know, even if, yeah, only if three people acting on an item, it appears that you would need for, for council action, so, so it would not happen. I guess, you know, what I'm, what I'm-
Well, I didn't want to get into this, but University Farms?
Yeah.
Personally, I think you've got a conflict because you own part of a company that a lady got up and spoke to and your husband sits on the board and you tell me that's not a conflict, so, but I don't want to go to that.
Well, we won't, we won't and I won't respond to that. I guess-
Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to clarify the record. If the City Attorney's Office issued opinions that two members of council, a legal opinion that their abstention should reduce the quorum, it would take it from seven members to five members. A majority of five members is three members, just for the record.
Sounds like you really want to do this then, huh, council?
Actually, Tracy Chase, I don't have any indication one way or another. I do think though that the clerk has an issue with the timing of the ballot. It is up to this. I just wanted it clear what the abstention and issuance of our opinions would or would not do, so that was not a misunderstanding. I do not have a personal beef one way or another, nor does the office. We are representing this council, bringing this to you in a timely fashion, so you have the opportunity to make the decision.
I, I have a question. So originally you said you had to have four and now you're saying you only have to, you have to have three?
If the city attorney issues an opinion, it can reduce the quorum. That written opinion has yet to be issued.
I guess, one thing I'm-
And how long does that opinion take to get issued?
Again, Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office, it would just take a matter of a few days.
So let's continue.
No, this item has-
It's been voted on.
It's been voted on. I, I guess one thing I, I'd like to talk about too is by opening up a campaign account and starting to solicit funds, someone is in the function of running. So someone else at this point could come in and question if that is one of those five people that, so this could move through as a private action. And, and I think that's the course that it should. I think, I feel very strongly that this is not a good precedent for us to involve ourselves in these questions. Our role is to oversee our charter through the legislative process, not in any specific political race.
Well, isn't, isn't this overseeing the charter? Making sure of we have viable candidates running for city office?
Well, I think we had plenty of opportunities for twenty years and, and that, that is left through the legislative process. We're a legislative body. I think we seek legislative direction for our charter. Going back into the courts for the benefit or disadvantage of five people, I don't think that's where we need to be.
Okay, so what if you, what if we have the elections and then all of a sudden somebody's disqualified? Then what happens to the race? We have to double our money, go out and redo, have another ballot that cost a quarter of a million dollars?
And you're saying that no, the two people who are elected-
I'm not saying anybody. I'm saying there's, there's, right now we know, I've heard of five or six former elected officials that are looking at doing it. And whether they are or not, I've known four or five people from the community that are looking at doing it. And it'd make it a lot easier for the four or five running in the office if we had a clarification on this.
But, Mr. Mayor, didn't, didn't the council at the time in two thousand and seven feel they had a clarification? I mean, haven't, hasn't this, this question been out there for about five years?
In two thousand and seven this came up?
This, this memo was originally written years ago. If there was a question-
Is that, is that, is that an opinion or just a what from the Attorney General? I, I haven't looked at it in years.
It's an opinion.
So could council though, I mean, could candidates come in? Why can't they come into the city clerk's office and hand them their opinion? You guys all go out and get yours. Eddie, you go get yours and Dwight gets his and Sharon and Jessica, I don't know. But I'm just saying, I just, come on.
But I guess the difference is, we as a body and our legal office should come from a point of-
But as a city, we don't do that. We don't get involved in campaigns.
From a point of neutrality, from a point of neutrality. Here, here, let me give you an example. Okay, so you have candidate B who has served there twelve years on council and now they're considering running. They're going to go solicit a legal counsel to file their position, slanted position on their document. And you might have someone from the other side who's going to then file theirs. I think we're in a position to file a, a, a request from neutrality. And that's to me what we're here to do.
But how can we say that's neutral when we have people on this body that serve now?
We, we just got comment from our legal, our legal, our independent legal counsel to, to acquire that opinion.
It's, it's also covering people that are not in office now to clarify what they can.
Sure, I, I get that, but then have it be on their dime. That's all I'm saying.
Well, then if we go to the ballot and they disqualify and then we have spent a quarter of a million dollars doing a revote.
I don't, I don't see it as anyone jumping on anybody's campaign. I see it as clarity for the City of Reno and for its residents to know who can run and who can't run.
That's okay, everyone can agree to disagree. I totally get it. Don't, don't sweat it. I mean, we all-
Mr. Mayor, can I make just one more? John Cadlec, Reno City Attorney. Two things. One, until March fourteenth of two thousand and fourteen, the issue cannot even be, other than doing it the way we are suggesting that it be done, you can't do anything. People can't seek an opinion, well, they can, I guess they could try declaratory relief, but until someone actually files, there's, there isn't really, there may not be, there may not be standing to, to even bring the lawsuit. So that's the question. And more likely than not, in any lawsuit that comes out, should some candidate challenge past candidates or current city council members, the city, city's going to be involved in a lawsuit anyway, so you're not going to save any money in the sense because we're going to be in the lawsuit representing the city clerk's office for what that's worth.
Okay. Well, the-
Well, let me, let me ask this. Since we got some clarification, I didn't understand your opinion and how the majority, the majority as we sit here number-wise said to move forward, but in order to do it quorum-wise, we need that opinion. So do we need to make a motion to reconsider given this, or clarity on the information or is this a second motion?
Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office, a motion has been made on this and it, it did not pass. For a city council to adopt something, it has to be in an affirmative motion. A motion for reconsider would be one of the parties who are on this side and neither party is seeking reconsideration. So at this point in time, it has been voted on by this body and you have determined, the body has determined by a majority that, or has been determined that by lack of affirmative vote not to give us direction. And that's fine, that's one of the choices that was available to you. I think it was important for you to understand this issue and the opportunity, so we thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you. Motion fails. Now we go to item L one, identification of council agenda items.
Mayor, I would like to have a, it came up at our last meeting when we did the certification for a plan development handbook. A little bit of understanding, at what point a plan development handbook is not an amendable document? Sometimes they're amended, but how, how does that relate to the vesting rights within NRS related to plan development handbooks? And, and I'm particularly interested in what our practice is in, in contrast to Washoe County and Sparks. It seems like they do not go out and amend handbooks and I'm wondering what our code and NRS say about amending plan development handbooks.
Any other items you want to put, Ms. Jordan?
The only other item I had that dovetails off of our last meeting, we had talked about the town hall meetings with regards to homelessness and panhandling. After kind of mulling that over a little bit and I'll get council input on this, I kind of wonder if maybe we approach that like the graffiti with a task force, certainly to, to start so that we can maybe get our hands around and, and have some key people involved initially before we have that town hall or, or maybe, I don't know that the date's been set on that yet, so that, that would be my only recommendation is to maybe create a, a task force versus holding a town hall meeting on that subject.
I totally agree. And I've had that discussion with staff as well. And we have history of having done that successfully.
And we have history of having done that successfully.
Mr. Mayor, just so councilmember Jordan is aware through you to councilmember Jordan, that if you call something a task force, any group you create may be subject to open meeting law. So, just so you're aware of that. Any group that you create that reports or recommends back to this body, whether you call it a task force, a subcommittee, a group...
Well, that's what we're doing with graffiti, right?
Correct, correct. But just so you're aware, if you -- I just didn't know your vision on the town hall. So, just keep that in consideration.
No, no. I think maybe at a future meeting on our next agenda would maybe be, what would the makeup of such a committee look like?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just an update on where we're at on the development fees?
The record, A. Gordon. I ended up, I support this because there's a lot of properties we don't even know we own right now. And then I hope they know in the end that they would analyze the fact if they could be reused on a project or something. And then, in the end, I hope that their properties just sit there and that we could sell them and apply towards the debt. So, I think this would be a good thing. Thank you.
It's my opinion, after being here for almost 12 years, we do have policies and procedures, and they are brought back to the council for final vote on anything that we do or the staff does. And I'm just wondering if we really need to spend two hours, or can your staff get a report to us and stuff what we do?
Well, Mr. Mayor, we did have a report from the city attorney's office at the last meeting. It was really on the procedures. And we don't, as best I can tell, I haven't seen any real policies related to our sale of property. And so, you know, we've had a lot of properties come on the agenda to sell. So, I was thinking that a lot of cities had an intermediate step before something comes up or bids are taken on a property of kind of the council categorizing properties as necessary or surplus. And then they go out, and, you know, the public knows we have a surplus property list. They can come to us, or we can go out, you know, list them. And so, that's what I was thinking. It would be more efficient on our end, and that's why I was asking for two hours.
We do have a policy on bidding properties and things like that. And then, when any member of the city staff thinks we've got surplus property, they have to come to us and bring it to us. And there's state laws about how we bid it and auction it and everything else.
Mayor, if it's the council's desire, we could bring back, and if this would, you know, as opposed to preparing policies, I mean, we could bring back a report or send a memo to council outlining what our current policies and procedures are. And maybe that's a good first step before we go out and begin drafting new policies.
And, Mr. Mayor, that's exactly what I was going to suggest, coupled with, attached to that, a list of properties that are even in a possible position for purchase, either by staff recommendation or inquiries that you've received. If we have nothing, or even two or three, then that should be part of our evaluation of dedicating limited staff time.
We could include that as well.
Okay. Well, you know, the July 31 memo by the attorney's office for the process for leasing and sale of property, I mean, I guess this new memo would build upon that. And then, councilmember Zadra is asking for essentially the listing of surplus properties. Is that?
A property wheel?
Yeah. I mean, I was really looking more for a process of how we would define, and this is what a lot of cities do. What are the surplus properties? What are the essential? That's one thing that cities really do, you know. And I don't have any positions about any property whatsoever, but, you know, I would hope that an essential property would maybe be Southside School or McKinley. But, you know, that'd be like the state in Nevada selling the mint building. But that's kind of how these policies usually work out. So, I'll accept that motion and look for what staff brings forward.
So, just to clarify, the motion is to send a memo outlining our current policies and procedure? Or is it the motion to prepare the policies? I just want to clarify what we're...
I would like for you to outline a, state what the processes are, maybe look at a few examples from other cities and see if we have any gaps. I understand very clearly what the NRS is, and I think the city attorney's office did a really good job on stating that. And so, I'm looking for that. Councilmember Zadra actually wanted to go further and inventory the surplus properties, and...
And I'm just trying to get clarification because there's two different things between identifying -- I think there's a difference between identifying what our current policies and procedures are and comparing to other organizations and what the gaps are versus just sending a memo outlining what our current policies and procedures are. And I don't believe the memo from the city attorney's office outlines everything. I think it was specific to leasing and specific to the NRS. So, I agree with you. I think that we would be building upon that memo. But I just, because we've had some discussion up here that varies in scope here, and I just want to make sure we're clear on what the scope is.
Yeah. Well, I guess we could start with what our policies are, but I'm pretty sure we don't. I haven't seen any. I thought that's what I asked for before, and this is what showed up. And, Mr. Manager, for, from my request, we've already got the information. It would be pulling up, in essence, the CB Ellis report that we commissioned two years ago, and then current activity that is either being initiated by a private developer looking to secure some of our property, or are there properties that were identified in that report from CB that staff is interested and anticipating bringing to us for some recommendation in the very near future? I'm trying to see, are there a half a dozen opportunities that this is going to be coming in front of us in the next year? Perhaps some staff time would be appropriate. If there's nothing coming in front of us with limited staff time, I'm not so certain that it's something we need to address at this point.
So, it would be our current policies and procedures, an inventory of basically our property, what we think the disposition is, and what activity we're currently engaged in, essentially.
Correct, correct.
Is that a motion?
Certainly.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L5, Ms. Brackus.
This item was another policy matter related to street closures, which are called abandonments or vacations, of streets and alleys. And these are streets that are currently open. These come through occasionally. I can think of maybe three or four. We dealt with kind of the tail end of one in Old Southwest neighborhood. And so, this was to prepare a briefing on what our policies related to street and alley closings are. We have the development code and NRS, of course. We have law. But we really have kind of a vacant, you know, what are the policies? And I would add, but these are usually very controversial. I see one master plan policy that says, you know, the traditional grid pattern will be, you know, kept intact. But that's, the grid pattern is really just in the old neighborhood. So, I don't see any other policies. And what, when we sit in our role as the council, and I'll mention that vacations come straight to us. They don't go to the planning commission, which has more of a community perspective. It really is hard for us to make a decision if we don't have any policies. Well, should we close this road? I don't know. You know, this is, he thinks so, the applicant. But, you know, how do we evaluate? So, it's, I think it would lead to, if we, you know, inventory that we have a gap there, a little more ability for us to be strategic when we are faced with these requests. So, I, that's why I would ask for at least two hours of staff time to work on this.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to hear from staff on it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fred, I'm your community development director. As with the other item, we do follow NRS as it outlines procedures for vacation and abandonments. And essentially, we do a lot of analysis when we go through that. And our finding, and I'm going to ask Bill Gold to come up and correct me if I'm wrong on here, but basically, we look at, is this going to be materially detrimental to the community? And we bring that forward to the city council as a recommendation. And at that point, the city council makes a recommendation based on some of the analysis that we do in answering that question, will the abandonment of this alleyway be materially detrimental to the community?
And also, would it be detrimental to the neighbors or the people in the neighborhood and all of that?
Yes.
I knew we had a policy.
That's the state law finding. And I'll add, you know, in my review of other communities, some of them have policies that it's a very hard, you know, we are very concerned about closures. If they're on a bus route, a route that is used as a train, as a school bus route, or links to a school, or links to an open space area, we don't, we will not do closures. And so, a vast street...
Don't we take those into consideration when we're looking at it?
We could, or we could not.
Well, I think we always have.
Well, and I think, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I guess that's where my concern is. Right now, the way we handle it, it leaves the discretion up to us, pretty much. If we start putting in writing what we're going to consider and not consider, it takes the discretion away from us. And I think right now, I like that it gives us the discretion to look at it and say, that's not, that is, or it's not detrimental. I think it gives us that ability.
That's right.
Well, I mean, I guess I would say it is best practice to maybe have a little more background policy looking at what is the role the street says. And policy is not a straitjacket. It's not ordinance. It is a guiding principles. And I think that a lot of cities get to the point of putting in policies in place after street closures are seen to be detrimental to neighborhoods or made in ad hoc fashions.
I just disagree with you. I mean, that's...
I think that we've got plenty of guidelines, and it does bring it back to this council. No matter what staff says, whether they like it or dislike it or whatever, we have the final voice in approving any abandonments. And I don't think, I personally don't see the need to waste two hours. I think you can come back and explain the policies and tell us what they are, and we go from there. Yes, sir. Do you give me a motion?
I'm not in favor.
Okay. Ms. Brackus, you want to make a motion?
The issue, and I'll just, you know, mention when we think about abandonments, you know, maybe at some point, we need to think about the abandonments we've done and maybe work from a case example where one comes through, and it's a tough decision. And we look to see that maybe it would be good to have a little more background policy. I look over at what's known as the Boondock property, and that First Street was abandoned there, and Mill Street was abandoned. And incrementally, abandonments do add up, and they do have big impacts. And I just think that it would be good for us to have some policies to think about strategically about what abandonments do to the circulation in areas when we are faced on ad hoc.
Well, I think that we took that all in consideration when we did the Boondock. We just didn't know the economy was going to go to hell in a handbasket, and everybody was going to go bankrupt. But I think that we did a great study on it, and I think staff came to it and did a great staff, did a lot of stuff, and this council made the decision to do it, or the previous council made the decision to do it. All right. Have no motion. We'll go on now to a public hearing. Any public comments? My favorite motion. My motion to adjourn. And second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.